Thirty seconds. Ten seconds. Welcome to the City Council of the City of Foster City and Foster City Planning Commission Meeting of Monday, September twenty first, two thousand and twenty at six thirty P. M. Pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N. Two thousand and nine twenty, the meeting will be held by teleconference and or video conference only. The public may participate by joining the Zoom meeting and submitting their public comments in a live meeting format. Any emails sent to public comment at fostercity.org will be provided to the City Council and the Planning Commission prior to the meeting. Emails sent after the start of the meeting will be provided after the meeting. Pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act, Government Code, Section five, four, nine, five, three, all votes shall be by roll call due to council members and planning commissioners participating by teleconference.
Thank you very much. I'm calling the meeting to order and roll call, please.
Roll call, council members, Risha Washti.
Present.
John Fruman.
Here.
Sanjay Ghani.
Here.
Sam Hindi.
Here.
And Mayor Catherine Mahonpor.
I'm here.
Great. Planning Commissioners Evan Adams.
Here.
Nicholas Haddad.
Here.
Ravi Jagtiani.
Here.
Richard Wykoff.
Here.
And Chair Oliver Pattem.
Here.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item three, public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, we are taking comments in a live meeting format. Anyone who wants to provide a public comment, please raise your hand during this time.
Thank you. I'm going to give a few seconds here for people to raise their hand.
We have a raised hand. First raised hand is Erin Holmes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Erin Holmes, and I hope I'm here at the right special meeting, but I'm here to talk about the rezoning of the townhouses at the end of Gola Avenue. So if I'm wrong, please let me know. So I I spoke this, I pretty much said this speech at a council meeting before, and so I'm going to repeat it again because it's very important. I was born and raised in Foster City. I went to Foster City School, Bowditch, Hillsdale. I've lived in Foster City my whole life. I'm now a teacher at Audubon for the past fifteen years, which is right down the street from where this rezoning could possibly happen. So I wanted to speak just about how important I feel that it should not be rezoned. So some of my main concerns are that absolutely the lack of space, the amount of units they're trying to put in this space is absolutely unacceptable. For obvious safety reasons, for emergencies, for all sorts of things, there is not clear exits from that area. It would have to be rebuilt on Sea Island Lane, and so I feel like that absolutely is not a safe area to build, especially such high-density housing. We also have had quite a few high-density buildings throughout the past few years, and I've seen them available, and they're not being sold to anyone. But I feel like Foster City needs to stick with the vision that we've had from Jack T. Foster, that I teach my students all about, that this high-density housing needs to stop in our city. I realize that we need people to be in our city, and I love our city. I'm a part of it in many ways, but our schools are over capacity. We have major traffic issues, and if this area was rezoned, that would just completely add to our problem on Triton, that area. So I just want to say that I strongly suggest that area not be rezoned, and I will continue to keep speaking on this, and I appreciate your time. I know everyone's working hard. I'm a teacher. I teach all day. I had seven conferences today, and I still made the time for this because it's that important. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have another raised hand, Rob?
We do. The next raised hand is Ken Chan.
Thank you. Mr. Chan.
Hello. Can you guys, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. So hello, first and foremost, hello, members of the Foster City City Council. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm an organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with our communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes in our county. I'd first like to thank everyone on council for your leadership throughout this unprecedented pandemic, and on behalf of my organization, I'm here today to extend our appreciation for all the hard work performed by Foster City staff in identifying an affordable housing opportunity, or sorry, an affordable housing overlay zone to help create more housing for our community members. Thank you. To build affordable homes, we need sites, money, and leadership. This policy will provide sites, provide sites. We are willing to work with the council to identify funding sources that can help make new homes a reality. Additionally, we would like to urge you to adopt a tenant relocation assistance ordinance to prevent homelessness from people in your community at risk at losing their homes at no fault of the renters. I am happy to provide details to you offline. Thank you.
Thank you. Have another hand raised?
We do. Hand is Barb.
Barb?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you. Or we could. We can't now.
There. How's that?
That's better.
Okay. So most of you know who I am. My name is Barbara Grissette, and I'm one of the tenants at Foster's Landing, the community where we got a notice that we have to either move out or the rent is going to be raised three hundred and twenty-five percent. So I know, like, Mr. Hindi and Sanjay, you guys have been working with us, but right now it's kind of at a standstill, and the fifty units that are going to be, we're going to have to move in December, we haven't heard anything, and it's like three months from now. I personally called someone at Essex that I had talked to before, and she told me, you know, don't stress about it, don't worry about it, you're going to get another year. But so far, we haven't seen any paperwork or any signing or anything of another year. And as Mr. Chan was just saying about, yeah, there are people, there's going to be seventy-four units that are going to be homeless in the next three years, unless we make some kind of a deal with Essex. So I'm not exactly sure where we should go from that, from here, or do any of you know anything about this one extra year?
Marlene, do we have any update on that?
Sure, Barb. We are working with Essex to have the extension, which we'll be bringing to the council in October, so stay tuned, and if you want to email me, I can provide you additional details.
Okay. Thank you, Marlene.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more raised hand. That is Matt Cohen.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen.
All right. Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, my my grandparents live in Foster's Landing. They are in phase one. So according to what we've learned so far, they're going to be subject to eviction at the end of this year. They're almost ninety years old. They've lived there for twenty years. They're immigrants. They have limited English. With with respect to all the outreach efforts that have made so far, none of them have reached them. We've made extensive efforts from us, we're across the country. We've been constantly trying to get in touch with people over there to see what options are available for them. They've lived there for twenty years. All they want to do is spend the rest of their lives in Foster City, but unfortunately, it looks like it's not going to happen at this point. Everybody they know is there, their doctors are there, their caretakers are there, there's no other options for them. They make extremely low income. There's nothing in the area, even the other low-income places that they could possibly qualify for are approximately two hundred to three hundred percent more than what they're paying for rent right now. Nothing else in California is affordable to them. Like I said, they've been residents of Foster City for over twenty years. At this point, they've runs camps for kids in the area. They they've they've done everything that they do in Foster City, and unfortunately, from what we've seen, and we've attended a couple of these meetings now, there's been no help offered to them at all from the city. From what I understand, there was a bidding process, and it was a little bit too high for the city to to step in and pay for it, and that's unfortunate for us. There's no other option but for us to move them across the entire country and either take them in with us or put them up somewhere where where it's more affordable for them. What I what I want to implore to you guys is, and I've attended a few of your meetings, I see people bidding on things to to make the city more more beautiful and flowers to put in different types of places and things like that, but I really think it's time for the priorities to get straight here and for you guys to take care of your most vulnerable citizens, which is your almost ninety-year-old people that have been living there for twenty-plus years. From what I've seen, this has got to be close to one of the richest cities in the county, and unfortunately, if it's too much for you guys to pay to get people to outreach and help them out and help them find something in your community, which is where they want to stay, if you could just possibly take some of that money or whatever you're willing to spend on it, if it's not as much as people are willing to submit their contracts for, and give it to them to help them with their moving expenses, because they're not going to find anything, there's no other options in Foster City that's available for them. All we can do is move them here across the entire country. Anything that you guys can can spend will will help us do that. They can't afford anything else. We we have my, I think my grandfather is a engineer in Russia that moved here twenty-five years ago and started.
Sorry, three minutes?
Started camps for kids in your community. I have a librarian who moved here and did nails in your community. It's it's, I think that you guys need to need to come together, and if you're not willing to spend as much as bids to help people, help them find a place to live, you need to give them the money to help them with moving expenses. You guys need to support your elderly who have lived their whole life there. This is in the middle of a pandemic. They're they're stuck in their house, there's fires, there's they're sending me pictures of red skies there, and they still want to stay, but nothing is giving, is being given to them to help them stay. You know, just think about, they're going to get, they're going to have to move, and unfortunately, we don't know when the things in our area is going to be available for them to move to, so there's a chance that they get evicted. These are almost.
Cohen, Mr. Cohen? Thank you for your remarks.
You said three minutes. I'm I'm two minutes into my three minutes.
Three minutes are up. I'm sorry.
The three minutes were up. A few, a couple.
Look, let me give twenty, thirty more seconds.
Okay. Thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. I just want you guys to think about how it's going to look in the press when these guys are getting evicted, ninety-year-old people are getting evicted from Foster's Landing, and you guys have given them absolutely no support at all. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to find out a little bit more of the what we have been trying to do, Marlene, you could connect with him and and give him an update, maybe?
Sure.
Mr. Cohen, thank you. Next raised hand?
We have another raised hand. Next raised hand is Sai, S.A.I. If you could give your, they just lowered their hand. So we do have another raised hand, a batter, if you could give your full name when you get the live. There you go.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, my name is Abdurrahim Ilamari. Yeah, I'm the, one of the people right here have probably in Foster City Landing. You know, we're still waiting for the update. Right now, we have almost like three months from the deadline. I'm, my situation, you know, my situation is like a little bit difficult. I have like a disability with three child. I get like only if I am doing my best to looking for another place, but there is no way, no way. I keep like applying in another places, there is no way, you know? I'm thinking if there is no, no, no solution, I'm going to find myself in the end of this year in the streets. You know, this is the reality. I hope you guys can like help us, like, do your best, and we will appreciate, we will appreciate it again. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next raised hand is Maria Magala.
Maria?
Can you hear me?
I, we can hear you now.
Okay. I had it unmuted. I'm also a resident of Foster's Landing, and this is my first meeting I came to. I didn't have a chance before the, you know, pandemic, and I'm a single mother. I have two kids here. I'm the only one working right now, and it's hard, yeah. I'm a essential worker. I've worked at Safeway, I've been working in the pandemic time, and I really, we have three months, and I wanted to know the same situation like the others, that, you know, we need more fundings. I applied different places, and they all said they're all booked, you know, they don't have nobody, they're not accepting right now, the BMR market. I've been applied for the Monteras, and they told me that I have to live in San Mateo and work in San Mateo. So they said they're preferring the people from San Mateo County. So I'm I'm also, you know, worried, and I want to know what's, if they signed anything for, you know, if they were going to give us a year, because I got a, I emailed saying that they might, you know, give us one more year, but I don't know anything from there, and I'm very worried. I've been here almost twenty years also, and it's like, you know, I don't want to be evicted or kicked out, and I can't afford to pay, I don't know how much it'll be, four thousand or more. I'm still looking for BM, you know, below-market apartments, and yeah, I just want to know what's what's going to happen next, if there's any more fundings or.
We are, we are actually going to take this up at a future council meeting, correct, Marlene?
Oh, okay.
That is correct. Sometime in October. I don't have a date.
Okay, thank you.
I think, Mayor, I think we're also going to discuss it today as far as what we have been doing and where we're at.
Okay.
Right. We will cover that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next raised hand?
Next raised hand is Shu Shukla.
Hello?
Hello.
Oh, hi. I I understand that today's meeting is to discuss on Tom Town Homes at sixteen zero one Beach Park Boulevard as well. I saw that in agenda, so I I live in this, just across the Town Homes, and I want to let let the council and everybody know that, you know, in the local community, it is not a welcome project, it's going to be, you know, a lot of issues created with this high-density project. In in this effort, we have taken some steps. Sanjay Ghaniji and Risha Washti, both the council members, we invited them here in the local Town Homes, I mean, community here, and there was a meeting early, I think, last year, immediately after the gatekeeper meeting related to that project, and more than forty people came and they raised their concern, and Sanjay Ghani said what he has said in the gatekeeper meeting also. He he had shown his concern as well and wanted to listen to community voice, and Risha as well. So so, you know, all the forty people were opposing with, you know, so many issues related to parking, related to, you know, so much infrastructure around, and we do not have any three-story buildings here. It's going to block so many things. And then apart from that, we, a couple of volunteers, we did, you know, a petition drive in the local, immediate local community, and we have raised, we have got more than three hundred and fifty signatures against this project from immediately local houses, single-family homes we visited, and we shared about the project, and everybody was against this development, and whenever council need, we can support the hard copies of all the signatures. It is ninety-nine percent of the houses, whoever were available when we went there, everyone was, you know, this is not done. I mean, there is a school here, there is so much things, and and so we have those documentation. This was done pre-pandemic situation, and so immediately, immediately next to the project. So that's the community voice, you know, that's a very high-density project, and I can submit all the, you know, petition work whenever you guys need, and we can do bigger drive also, once that situation becomes normal. If you want all the hundred percent houses' voice also, we can bring it up, but this immediately also shows how much concern is there in the community related to this project. So I just wanted to bring this to notice to the council member if you are discussing on on this thing.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next raised hand?
Next raised hand is Astridina. If you could give your full name when you're.
Hi, actually, I have Nina Hannah with me, and she has some questions as well.
Hi, everybody. My name is Nina. I'm resident on Foster's Landing, long time, more than twenty years. I have a question for Katrina, Miss Katrina Mahonpor. I have a letter from Mr. Cole, Director of Housing Department of San Mateo County, who confirmed that housing authority every month receive one hundred vouchers moving to work program. This is federal program. Second, I have a letter from Mayor of Foster City, Miss Mahonpor, dated March twenty-two thousand and twenty-four. He confirmed that a sex company, Foster's Landing, have accepted and currently accepts this voucher and any housing vouchers because it is required by Foster City Tenants Anti-Discrimination Regulation. Am I question, why you did not use this program? This is easy. Because city of Foster City received money from federal packet for affordable housing program. If this is not enough money, Foster City can appeal to federal department to give additional money. I spoke with Director Department Housing, Urban Development, and Washington DC, Mr. Carson, Minister Carson confirmed it. This is very easy way. My question, why you don't use this way? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I didn't quite understand your question. Did did anybody understand that on the council? I didn't quite understand what the question was.
I I did not either, but if she wants to connect with me separately, I can I can try and see if I can answer that. I I know she was talking with something related to the vouchers, which is administered to the county, so I'm happy to touch, yeah.
We helped her to explain. Yes, she was talking about vouchers that are administered by Housing Department of San Mateo County. Every month, lottery, and every month issue hundred vouchers. So Nina was asking, why can't we work it out with them and have those, you know, vouchers maybe distributed between our residents, so, you know, it will be covered, and Foster Landing accepts these vouchers. So that could be a way to fund, you know, their situation.
Sure. Again, the county has to look at the vouchers distributed in a more equitable manner. So like Foster's Landing, they're dealing with other similar situations with other cities. I will be happy to discuss it with them to see if they can give any priority, but as far as I know, they they have to make sure that these vouchers are distributed in a fair manner.
Well, yeah, but, you know, have you guys tried to talk into them and see if there is a way?
Yes, we have, we have talked to them. We have explored all the possible programs. Again, the the money that the county gets is from the state, which they have to make sure that every city or every every program receives equitably, and so they, we we've had conversations with them. We are applying for joint grant funding through them where we can use the grant money to help the Foster's Landing folks, and they have been extremely supportive of our our requests and are willing to work with us, but with the vouchers, it's it's not quite as easy or straightforward.
So so we are exploring that option. So can we can we move on to the next hand? I see we have some more hands raised.
The next raised hand is Angela Davion.
Hi. So I kind of just wanted to share a little bit about my experience with trying to find a new place under the BMR programs that have, you know, that we were placed at the top of the lists for, and also with Montero, from my experience, and and so I've been told by Essex, because I had to, right before Corona, I had to reevaluate my my lease, so they ran my paperwork, and the guy told me that I was probably one of the ones that was paying the the highest BMR price, and all the other ones that we've applied for, they're all way higher than my rent. So I can only imagine all the seniors and maybe disabled people that we have living here, it's completely priced out for them. So there had, yeah, I mean, even for me, it's it's a lot higher, and I'd have to probably take on another job to be able to make up the difference, but, yeah, I I don't know how you guys run the program or if it's changed, but it's a lot more than what we're paying here, because even Montero, which was the cheapest one, was like three hundred dollars more than what I pay here. And I know that, talking to Barb, because I talked to her a lot a lot of times too about the pricing, there's no, they even have a minimum, like, you have to make a certain amount to even apply. So how are, like, the seniors able to do that when they're on a fixed income with social security?
Thank you.
So I understand that you guys are doing what you guys can do, but unfortunately, your solutions really aren't solutions for a lot of the people that are in this predicament.
Thank you. Do we have another raised hand?
We do. The next raised hand is phone number. It starts with eight, nine, two. Go ahead and line and talk.
Perhaps you could tell them how to unmute themselves?
They are unmuted now.
Hello?
Eight, nine, two, area code, you are on air.
Can we maybe go to the next one until we can get in contact with eight, nine, two?
Sure. The the next speaker is also a phone caller, area code one, three, zero. Uh, sure. The, the next speaker uh has, is also a phone caller, area code one three zero.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm also, I also have a family there. And I, I have been in contact with Monica Li from the city, who's been, uh, by the way, fantastic and very helpful. Uh, but it's been since June that I've been discussing with her this, this potential contract that would extend this stay for the residents for another year. And uh in June, it seemed to be like an almost done deal. And now, um, the last time I talked to her, it seemed like it was not uh close to being signed. And I, I, you know, I appreciate um that you're saying that the city is, uh, you know, exploring various options. But, you know, with all due respect, we are in a, on a ticking clock here. And you're putting this off until October.
Whoever's talking at eight nine two, I think, could you mute? Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, uh, my point is, you know, we can't wait until October just to find out whether or not this contract could potentially be signed or not. We need a pledge from the city that says that they are, that, that you will sign a contract with Essex to extend the program for another year since there's all these potential projects that you're working on that could be of help or may, may not be of help. But at the same time, we're in a pandemic, we have three months left till phase one, when people are going to get kicked out. And I'm still not any closer to understanding what it is that's going to be done for this, for these residents that's going to be helpful to them. And um as much as I have stayed in contact with Monica, I still, I, I don't know. Um, I think somebody said to email them for further information. I don't know if uh that's going to be more information than Monica has been able to provide so far. But if it's not, I'm really not sure whether um this is sufficient at this point. And I, I don't think that waiting till October is, is a good idea. I think there needs to be a pledge from the city, there needs to be concrete solutions. At the very least, the very least, extend phase one and face, well, all the phases extended for another year. Allow the people additional time in this pandemic to figure out what in the world they're going to do. And I completely agree with the previous caller. I think her name was Angela. It's completely priced out. You have to have a minimum income just to apply to some of these places. And these people do not have it. The seniors do not have it.
Thirty seconds.
That's, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, yes, Councilmember Hindy.
So, I mean, I've seen, I've heard all these calls and I'm sure there's more to, to come. But I just want to, first of all, thank everybody for being here and sharing their experiences with us. And quite frankly, sharing their anxiety and their stress and their worries about their future and their housing condition. And I just want to assure, assure everyone that the council and the city are very well aware of what you are going through. And I have to tell you hundred percent that the city is doing everything in its power to address this issue. And I could also assure you that the extension of the agreement that Essex had announced in June is not being delayed by the city. Hundred percent, the city is willing to, the subcommittee, to be accurate. The subcommittee is willing to bring it to the entire council today, not tomorrow, today. But we are waiting on Essex. So uh staff has been in contact with Essex, I think as late as today. Because this has been on the front burner for the subcommittee, Vice Mayor Ghani and myself, as well as the council, quite frankly. So everybody is anxious and everybody wants to see this post-BMR agreement through. We are not waiting and we are not hesitating. And we are not, not committed. We are fully committed to see that no one, and I mean no one, in Foster Land goes homeless. And uh we will continue to push Essex to hold Essex accountable to what they had committed to you and to us in June at the town hall meeting when they sent a memo to all of you. But I have to tell you, Essex is the one who has not come through yet. But we will continue to push and hopefully we will have some news for you and development and update on this issue. But let me assure you once again, you know, uh, we have full understanding of the situation that you are in. And for me at least, this is personal. I don't want to see anyone not have a look over their head in any time and specifically during a pandemic. So please, let me assure you. We are doing everything in our power to keep you put, to extend this agreement for, till we figure this out and how we move forward. So we're not just trying to figure out how we could assist you with services and relocation. We're really trying to see if we could keep you put. And uh I don't know, you know, since this has not officially gone to the council. But I could tell you on the subcommittee level, we hundred percent committed to extending if Essex comes through with what they proposed back in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hindy. Do we have more raised hands, Rob?
We do. Uh, the next raised hand is Jordan Grimes.
Hi, uh, good evening. I'll try and keep my comment brief. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a member of Peninsula for Everyone. We're a grassroots housing advocacy group. But um I'm speaking just as myself tonight. I wasn't planning on commenting, but I was frankly stunned and struck by the juxtaposition of the Foster's Landing residents talking about their fear and pain of not knowing what to do, of not knowing where to go, of being evicted and uprooted after decades in the community. Um, immediately followed by a homeowner complaining about new townhomes. Um, and, and for the record, thirty-two townhomes on an acre is not high density. There's nowhere in the world that is the case. The privilege, the lack of compassion here is just, you know, I, I've been to a lot of city council meetings. I've been to a lot of meetings about housing. I don't think I've seen anything as privileged and ugly as that. Um, the reason housing in Foster City and the peninsula is so expensive uh is because our communities have refused to build enough of it, have refused to build enough of it for our workforces. Um, Foster City is one of the worst actors in this regard, um, as people are now discovering. The prioritization of the views and aesthetic, aesthetic preferences of affluent community members over the needs of affordable housing for working-class people is exactly why we are where we are today. Um, I'm looking forward to the rest of the meeting, uh, to holding Foster City accountable. And I hope moving forward, you guys choose a different path because we've seen where this one leads and it is bleak. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next raised hand, Rob.
First, there's Ro-Jay Bhakthu.
Hi, uh, good evening, everyone. You hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm so glad we got to talk a little bit about those thirty-two townhouses that the gentleman before me was, uh, you know, vouching for. Those not for any people that can afford those units. Each one's gonna sell for two million dollars, times thirty-two, sixty-four million dollars. You know, it's not about making Foster City more affordable. It's about bringing more people and make it more congested. And I'm living in the neighborhood and I can't imagine three-story high density in front of my house. So, uh, you know, the community already spoken about that. If he is soliciting some business, uh, you know, through this thirty-two unit, uh, you know, he's not living in the community to say that. You know, we're living here, we're suffering with the traffic, with schools, with everything else. And adding another thirty-two units, you know, that is not homogeneous even with the neighborhood. That will hurt the value of our houses and, and everything around us. You know, my kids, they're going to Bowditch, you know, and they say there is not enough even chairs in Bowditch in a, a normal time to sit and have lunch outside. You know, schools are very dense, the, the streets are very dense. You know, they're gonna block the whole area with thirty-two units, you know, four-bedroom each one. You know, imagine how many people is gonna live there in, in this little area of the church, the Lutheran, the ex-Lutheran church. You know, I, I respect everything, you know, but if anything has to be there, to be built there, you know, my suggestion to build the homes as the one that they are already built to continue the street with regular, single-family homes, you know, and invest in a single-family homes in the neighborhood, not in high density. Uh, you know, high-rise, three stories that block the sun from the houses, block the sun for even, you know, if, 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 if one of those houses wanna put even solar system, it will block the sun all the morning, you know, from reaching those houses. You know, it's a, um, you know, just, uh, it's my concern. Um, you know, and if somebody wants to, 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 to bring more people to Foster City, make it affordable, not two million dollar each unit, who can afford that? You know, a teacher can afford, afford that, a worker at the Safeway can afford that. Who got, essential workers can afford that? Nobody can afford that. It's not for low-income people, it's not for people, essential people. It's just for making more money out of this land, you know? Just let's invest something to benefit the community with more houses, more single houses, single-family houses that will bring the, the whole circle, you know, to completion in that neighborhood. But to put three stories are gonna kill that neighborhood forever. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, I think we have one more, don't we, Rob?
We do. Uh, the next raised hand is Kathy.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I have a friend that lives at Foster's Landing and basically the stories that we've heard are pretty much her story. Um, she was, uh, limited English, so I have been trying to work through it on my own to figure out what's going on. So I do want to thank Mister Hindy for explaining uh very detailed what's going on there right now. Um, my friend has two daughters and one graduated from Foster, um, City High School and she now went on to UCLA with honors. The second daughter is the youngest and she has another year to try to get through high school and that's very important to uh everyone there. So anyway, what my question is, and I will email Marlene also, but is there something that we can do to facilitate the extension?
I think that you can connect with Marlene and uh discuss that with her.
Yeah, and I will do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I think that was it, right, Rob?
Uh, we've got the, uh, phone caller from eight nine two, uh, that raised their hand again. I'm gonna go ahead and ask them to unmute again. Let's see. Okay, you're unmuted. We should be able to hear you talk.
I have a feeling that might be me. Uh, my name is Helen Collins. I'm on my iPad and every time I hit the hand, it says lower hand and it's blue. So I don't know if that's showing, but in any event, thank you, Mister Hindy, for explaining uh the situation at Foster's Landing. I've been here twenty-five years and I'm on social security. And I am so depressed that I'm on antidepressants. I just don't know what to do. Um, I don't have any family left on the East Coast. And it, it's just really traumatic about thinking I'm gonna be homeless. But I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional and I think you'd be a time.
Thank you. Thank you. Please be assured that we're doing what we can to, to help the situation at, at Foster's Landing. So it's, um, we realize that it's a difficult time right now. And as Councilmember Hindy said, we're doing what we can do on our part, from our side. So I, I thank everybody for all the comments. I really appreciate it.
We, we do.
Thank you.
Uh, raised hand?
Okay, I'm gonna take one, I'm gonna take this last raised hand. We need to, um, proceed with our study session. So I'm gonna take this last raised hand.
Okay, the last raised hand is by Bo.
Hi, Anne?
Yes, we can hear you.
Um, I just, I kind of joined the meeting late, so I apologize if I missed out on something, if I speak out of turn or anything. But um I just wanted to, I, I know that the council is, um, um, doing what they can to protect the, the, um, people that are being affected right now. And I, I'm just wondering if, also in the future, for future projects, that, um, if we have lower housing, uh, um, lower income housing available, if, if there is a way to work it into, um, the projects where there is no expiration on these. Because, you know, people who need these types of housing, it's not like they're going to get, you know, any humongous raises anytime soon where when these expire, they're going to be able to afford, um, uh, you know, the current market rate. So, um, it, I mean, if we're, if we're going to be building, um, high-density housing and we are going to requiring lower income housing made available, there shouldn't be a reason for these, um, types of units to have an expiration to them. Um, you know, I'm a rube. I might be wrong about that. But I, I just wonder if there is a way to make it where there is no expiration to these types of housing in the future. Um, and then all, I also just want to say that I am against the thirty-two units um, that are being proposed on the Goal Avenue property. Uh, just for the sake of Egress, um, having thirty-two more units. Um, and the amount of traffic that's going to be going in and out of there with as many kids that live in that area, it's just going to be dangerous in my opinion. And I hope that the council thinks about the residents who have spoken up and the total, the number of residents who have spoken up about how they are against having thirty-two additional units um, in such a small area. I hope that that is being listened to and, and, um, not swayed in other ways, uh, in other possible ways in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you to all the speakers. We appreciate it. We, we like to hear from, from our residents for sure. So can we go to the next item?
Right, item for study session. We assess into study session for four-point-one Joint City Council and Planning Commission Study Session to Discuss Housing.
Thank you very much. So let's have the staff report on this, please.
So Mayor, um, City Council and also our, our planning commissioners, um, I just wanted to say a few words before Marlene and her staff gets into the study. Um, as you can see from the comments, this is a very important issue. Housing is a very important issue for not only our state, um, but our community. And you can kind of see the tension of interest, um, from our community. Um, and we wanted to bring the Planning Commission and City Council together to kind of talk about these issues because you have very different and distinct roles. Um, our city council, you guys are the, the decision-makers, the policymakers. And your, and your planning commission, they're your advisory body, um, on all planning issues and development issues. And so if there are opportunities for us to kind of understand, um, the same things, ask questions, my hope is that we can get together and develop a strategy for how we deal with housing in the future for Foster City. Um, we definitely want to preserve our neighborhoods and the character of our community. And how do we deal with some of the legal, um, things that are coming down, the laws that are coming down and requirements that we're gonna be required to implement uh, from the state and, and, and others and still maintain the values of what everybody loves about Foster City. Um, if you guys remember, just before the pandemic hit, we were prepared to have this kind of engagement session, um, related to housing that would, um, result in a strategy for housing. Obviously, it, it, that kind of got derailed. But tonight, I think we can start with a launch and an understanding of housing issues. Um, and hopefully we can create or develop some creative ways to resolve some of the issues that our community. to resolve some of the issues that our community is talking about, um, and that we know, um, is coming down the pipe. So with that, um, I'll turn it over to Marlene and she'll lead us through the presentation, sir.
Thank you, Dante. Just wanna make sure if everyone can hear me fine?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, uh, members of the City Council and the Planning Commission. As, uh, Dante alluded to, the, the real purpose of tonight's meeting is, um, just an understanding of the local and regional housing framework to just increase awareness um, with the residents on housing-related issues, also discuss some of the interconnectedness of housing and some other factors. And, um, also some outreach efforts, uh, that Dante mentioned, and some tentative timelines on some upcoming housing-related items. We're not here to take any, um, actions on any of the items or development projects, that's, that's noted in the staff report. Um, but really wanna receive some comments, have an open discussion on how we can collectively address housing-related initiatives and the city's long-term housing strategy. Understand that, uh, topic around housing can be pretty dense, as you could have read in the report, the long report and all the attachments. I'll try my best to break it down, so, um, the, the council, the commission and also the public can have a better understanding of what are some of the things we're dealing with, right from the state level to the local level. So, um, Sophia, if you could switch to, uh, slide three, please? Thank you. So as, as we all know, there's been some, um, changes at the state level over the last two to three years, uh, when it's come to housing. Particularly when Governor Mutha took office last year, he made affordable housing as one of his top priorities. And so with the state identified were certain housing challenges in, in the state, um, essentially, there isn't enough, uh, housing bills to catch up with the need. What, in the last ten years, we have produced on an average of, um, less than eighty thousand homes, uh, per year. Whereas the need or the projected need is a hundred and eighty thousand homes. There's also an increased inequality and lack of opportunities, there's lack of supply and rising costs. And, uh, really making it, um, harder for younger Californians to, to own and even sometimes rent housing that's affordable. Also, um, a lot of the people's incomes are going towards rent. It's estimated that more than three million households pay more than thirty percent of the income towards rent. And, um, more than one-point-five million households pay more than fifty percent of their income towards rent. Also, homeownership rates, um, are the lowest, um, in California since the nineteen-forties. There's a disproportionate number of people experiencing homelessness. We are home to twelve percent of the nation's population, but a disproportionate to twenty-two percent of the nation's homeless population. There's also multiple, um, and insurmountable barriers that are being faced due to housing because of the vulnerable populations, discrimination and inadequate accommodations for people with disabilities, which are worsening the housing situation. So what the state did, um, last year alone is it passed more than two-hundred housing bills, out of which, um, eighteen bills were finally signed in order to jumpstart the housing production. As you all recently witnessed, we, uh, we updated our ADU ordinance. There were six bills directly related to the ADU ordinance, which is directly, um, uh, you know, something that the state did last year. And so, um, it's very important for all of us to understand, um, the effects of these bills and future housing bills on Foster City as appointed, um, as elected and appointed, uh, officials. There's a lot of things that are going to be coming in front of you over the next, um, in the near future as well as in the next couple of years. But we really have to grapple with housing bills, with some of the state legislation and some of the state law requirements that cities are, are obligated to fulfill. So next slide, please? So, um, we're gonna give a real brief, it's almost like a housing one-on-one, if you will. Uh, kind of show like an overview of the housing framework at the state, regional and local levels. And the reason I think it's important to give this overview is it's, how do I say it? It is a, uh, top-down approach when it comes to housing. The state does its thing, the region does its thing, and ultimately, these things get trickled to the local cities. And so we have, uh, what we call the California Planning and Zoning Law that obviously establishes a framework for local language reg- regulations. It requires that mandates that every city adopts a general plan for its physical development. And the general plan is supposed to contain seven mandatory elements, of which, one of them is the housing element. Now, the state law also recognizes that local governments play a very important role in developing affordable housing. So in nineteen-sixty-nine, they mandated that all California cities, towns and counties must adequately plan for the housing needs of everyone in their community. And this state mandate is essentially the housing element. Now, the regional housing needs allocation proj- uh, process, which I'll go into a little more detail over the next few slides, is a very critical part of the housing element law. And what it does, it, it determines how many new homes, what are the affordability of those homes and how each local city must plan to provide for those homes at those affordability levels in their communities through the housing level. And so as part of this RENA process, the Regional Housing Need Allocation Process, the state determines a total number of residential units that need to be built and how affordable those units need to be in order to meet the housing needs of people at all income levels. And so these, um, local needs allocations are developed by what we call the Regional Council of Ga- Government or COGS. And so for the Bay Area region, the Association of Bay Area Governments or A-BAG is the COGS. And A-BAG's primary responsibility is to conduct the RENA process for Bay Area. They do this every eight years via the Housing Methodology Committee. And so they have stakeholders, local elected official staff, stakeholders, and various interest groups from around the region participating in this RENA process. And so on this slide here, um, it kinda just gives an overview of how the RENA works, how it's, um, how the, how it trickles from the state to the regions. Next slide, please? And so, um, on one hand, we have the RENA from the state and on the other hand, we have, um, kind of the region's own, um, blueprint, or what we call the Region's Land Use and Transportation Plan, also known as the Plan Bay Area. The, the next blueprint, we have the Bl- the Plan Bay Area twenty-forty, I believe, was the last one. This one is a Plan Bay Area twenty-fifty. It is the next long-range regional plan for transportation, housing, economy, the environment. And it is focused on resilient and equitable strategies for the next thirty years. And so some of the highlights of this plan, which is available on the Plan Bay Area A-BAG website, is improving affordability for all, expanding housing opportunities, focusing growth in walkable places, saving lives and protecting communities, and positioning the region for a robust economic growth. And so, um, it is anticipated, um, that the Plan Bay Area will be adopted in fall, uh, twenty-twenty. And by law, the RENA plan is required to be consistent with the development pattern from the Plan Bay Area twenty-fifties. These two planning processes, the RENA and the Plan Bay Area, they collectively seek to address the Bay Area's housing needs. However, they are over different time horizons. For example, the Plan Bay Area twenty-fifty has a planning horizon of twenty-fifty, whereas the sixth cycle of RENA addresses short-term housing needs, which is an eight-year cycle from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-one. And so to achieve the required consistency, both the overall housing growth for the region as well as housing growth for each jurisdiction, it must be greater in the long-range plan than over the eight-year RENA cycle. Next slide, please? And so this slide just basically shows, um, the Plan Bay Area twenty-fifty and RENA schedule. We are, um, almost at fall twenty-twenty and so right now, the A-BAG, um, NTC Housing Methodology Committee is, um, wrapping up its methodology, um, um, workings and trying to come up with a draft regional housing allocation for each of the cities. Next slide, please? So this is a very important slide right here. Um, so as I mentioned just now, um, the state identifies the total number of homes for which each region in California must plan in order to meet the housing needs of people. So on June nine, twenty-twenty, uh, HCD, which is the Housing and Community Development Department of the state, provided the following regional housing needs determination for the Bay Area. This covers again the period from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty. And so to your left, um, on your screen, what you can see is the RHND for Bay Area and the total number of units, um, for the next cycle is four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six units. Now, this number is approximately two-point-three times higher than the RHND that we received for the last cycle, which was the fifth housing element cycle. And that number was one-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety units. And so this, um, overall increase is something we anticipated. It's very similar to what other regions are, um, experiencing. Um, and it's primarily due to changes in the projection methodology to better account for overcrowding and other factors. And so the Housing Methodology Committee has been working, uh, on a RENA methodology that both assigns a total number of housing units to each of the local cities and distributes each city's allocation among the four affordability levels, as you see. Very low, low, moderate and above moderate. And so, um, the HMC is expected to finalize its recommendations this month for consideration by the A-BAG Regional Planning Committee. Uh, what, what the HMC is doing is they are giving higher allocations to cities that have more jobs than housing or are near job centers or, uh, have high opportunity areas. What they count or call as a high opportunity area is basically, um, determine on factors such as the quality of schools, low crime, et cetera. Based on all the methodologies that are being considered so far, what you see on the right side of your slide is the RENA for Foster City, which ranges anywhere from, uh, fifteen-hundred-and-forty units to, um, two-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty units. And it is likely that our final allocation will be closer in the, in the two-thousand-plus range, on the, on the upper range. And so I know A-BAG had a meeting, um, this past Friday and, um, they were, um, almost finalizing the, the option to go with the, with the high opportunity area with the jobs proximity. And so that would put us roughly in the two-thousand-plus range. Next slide, please? Um, this is just an overview, uh, or a timeline of the housing element process and, uh, timeline. So we are right now in September twenty-twenty. Um, the draft methodology will be submitted to the HCD. And the final methodology would be adopted, um, by January twenty-twenty-one. Uh, we do, e- each local city have some time to review their allocation and appeal if, 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 if they want to. So the appeal deadline is May twenty-twenty-one. And by July twenty-twenty-one, A-BAG will adopt the final RENA plan. And by December twenty-twenty-two, January twenty-twenty-three, um, each of the local cities have to adopt our housing element. But a lot of the, um, groundwork for the housing element has to start way before this, um, in, in order to have a meaningful public engagement. And as, um, Dante mentioned earlier, come up with a housing strategy for Foster City. Next slide, please? So, um, this one is, again, um, ties back to the housing element and the, the local framework. We have our Foster City General Plan that identifies goals, housing goals. And those are listed here, um, it, it talks about reinforcing the city's commitment to meeting housing needs, protecting existing housing, community character and resources, protect the supply and affordability of rental housing and consider potential public and private dev- redevelopment opportunities to increase the supply of housing, address affordable and special housing needs. And so what you see here, um, the Foster City General Plan serves as a constitutional blueprint for development in the city. It is a long-range planning document and so these goals are in the city's blueprint. Um, state regulations regarding what needs to be in a housing element are found in California and government code sections. And so again, as you can see, a lot of the, the, the process, um, the, the RENA, the housing element, it, it's all, um, it's all mandated by state laws and regulations. And so each of the city's housing elements must identify how we meet our local needs allocation. We must identify specific sites for development of housing for all income levels. And if we have insufficient existing sites, we must identify sites that could be rezoned to allow for the dev- development of housing units at densities that would meet the city's RENA numbers. Next slide, please? And so, um, what I'm going to do after this slide is, uh, take a break, um, pause for discussion. I know I covered a lot in the last few slides and so before I jump into the next half of the presentation, um, I, I'd like to open the floor for discussion, but let me just cover what are some of the challenges we are gonna face as part of the next housing element cycle? Is, um, basically being able to identify sites. Um, as we all know, we are built out, we don't have any vacant parcels. Um, we know that arena numbers are going to be in the range of two-thousand units. And so there are several new requirements in the sixth housing element cycle that really make it challenging for cities, um, as they embark in the housing element update process. So there's an increased, um, scrutiny or analysis of housing sites. And so, um, those are listed here. The state also wants to make sure that housing elements affirmatively further fair housing. Make sure they include in, that we include an assessment of fair housing practices. And also they have a provision of, um, no net loss, um, that require adequate site capacity at all times for all income levels. And so these are some additional things or additional changes, um, that, um, are part of this cycle. And so we have twenty-one elements in San Mateo County that is helping all the local cities navigate through this process and understand everything. And so this is something that will be coming to the Planning Commission and the City Council um, over the next, um, two to three years. It, it, it is going to be a long process. And, uh, Leslie Carmichael, our consulting planner, uh, will be taking a lead, uh, on this initiative. And so with that, um, I wanna take a pause and, um, ask, um, if anyone has any questions or, um, um, Madam Mayor, I don't know how you wanna, um, moderate this. I'll leave it to you.
Uh, I have one question to start it off. Um, do you, do we know what the vacancy percentage is now in Foster City? With the units that are available?
In terms of the rental vacancies?
Rental vacancy?
Um, okay.
Any kind of a vacancy rate you can give me?
I can find, try and find that information for you. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I know I recently emailed that information to someone, so.
Okay.
Let me see if I can find that for you.
Thanks. Um, if people would raise, if, from the, uh, either the Planning Commissioners or the Councilmembers, if you want to raise your hand so that, um, we can have some kind of order to this, it would be great. If you have any questions, and if there are no questions, then we'll move on.
Okay, alright. Okay, so, um, as, as we heard, uh, from a lot of the comments, um, from, uh, from tonight, is, um, affordable housing continues to, um, be the biggest challenge, um, for the state and, and for, for us. So the challenge basically is So the challenge basically is um some of the long commutes. Contributing to regional traffic problems and greenhouse gas emissions. Displacement of households that cannot afford to stay in the community as housing costs rise. Displacement of people who grew up in Foster City who cannot afford to remain in the area. And economic impacts of employers having difficulty recruiting and retaining employees. Who cannot afford to live near their jobs. And and so um these are some real um challenges that um. Cities um and the state is facing with with housing in general. What 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 is considered overpaying for housing is if a household is paying more than thirty percent of their income. Um, they are considered overpaying or cost burden. And so according to uh data published by the Housing and Urban Development HUD. About thirty one percent of households in Foster City are paying more than thirty percent of their income for housing. And approximately thirteen percent are paying more than fifty percent of their income. With that said, we have also made significant progress um. Or an effort in trying to provide affordable housing. Um, over the past um cycle, a housing element cycle, or to date, we have created about. Four hundred and ninety nine affordable housing units. We also adopted a twenty percent inclusionary policy, one of the higher percentages in in the county in the region towards. Um, affordable housing. What this means is anytime a housing development is is built. Twenty percent of the new housing units are required to be affordable. We adopted the commercial linkage fee that requires commercial developers to pay towards the city's affordable housing fund. And um recently, um, a- as you all know, we streamline our requirements for accessory dwelling units in an effort to to spur. Um, housing and so. What you have in your packet is also a summary of these affordable units. By income level and the housing income limits for San Mateo County.
Uh, can I interrupt you, Marlene? I see Councilmember Fruman has a a question.
Sure.
Yes, thank you, Marlene. On the topic you're on right now, you mentioned that uh Foster City has a twenty percent. Inclusionary policy regarding uh new developments. And that's higher than most, if not all, other communities. And four hundred and ninety nine affordable units, and I think I I meant I saw it in your report. That we were one of the top five percent of the state. Cities in the state regarding uh compliance with the housing element. Uh, just interested in what Governor Gavin Newsom or the state of California has. Has given to the city of Foster City in the way of awards, recognition, credits, or otherwise for for attaining those results.
Sure, uh, thank you, Councilmember Fruman, for that question. So um. Basically, you're you're right. We are actually one among the twenty nine cities that have met up rated very low and low. And above moderate income um Rena units. And so um the state have the way it's rewarding us is. They're not subjecting us to streamline ministerial approval process under S B thirty five. So S B thirty five requires uh streamlined review uh review process for uh for housing projects. Where the cities have um little discretion if if housing projects were to come to the table. As an example, um, um, I believe the cities of uh Cupertino that uh in. I forget, there's another city in the peninsula that that had a major housing development project um that was subject to S B thirty five. So that that's um, that's one way the state has rewarded us, but not to say that they can change their mind. And uh have a subject to uh have a subject to it in the future.
Thank you.
Um, Evan Adams has his hand raised. Commissioner Adams.
Hi, Marlene. Thank you, Mayor. Marlene, you just mentioned streamlining. And since this is a study session, I've been trying to understand better. Uh, when are we subject to streamlining on in the staff report in the full packet on page fourteen? Uh, you talk about the the cities at risk of losing eligibility for grants and other funding for affordable housing. As well as penalties in the form of mandatory streamlined approvals for affordable housing projects. So at what point do we stop making? Does the state uh call us on not making progress? In regards to affordable housing, uh low-income housing and such? And that's apply streamline.
Sure, I I I'll try and attempt to answer that question after you, Commissioner Adams. However, I might take the help of our city attorney. Uh, Gene on this. Um, my understanding is um i- i- if we. If the city has um promised or adopted a housing implementation program uh in its housing element. And are not making an effort towards um implementing those programs. As an example, we'll we'll talk about this a little later. The Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, then the state could very well subject us to penalties. Um, or um say, for example, we have a housing project that comes to the table. And it checks off all the boxes in terms of meeting its general plan and zoning requirement. And the city, for some reason, um, maybe because it. Subjective design standard, for whatever reason, decides that it is not going to approve that project. Then yes, we we could be penalized by the state. And so um I will leave it to Gene if she wants to add anything.
No, Marlene, I think that's a good explanation. Thank you.
Okay, does that answer your question, Commissioner Adams?
Uh, just to understand that it, so we could potentially be subject to streamlining now or at some later date?
At some later date. I think I think what the based on the most, so every year we have to submit an annual report to the state. Uh, showing what we have done in terms of housing. And so. As an example, the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone is something we promised that we we would provide as part of the Housing Element Implementation Program. As long as the state sees that we are making an effort um towards those programs, we'd be okay.
So the tripwire is when we stop making progress?
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Mayor?
Uh, yes, Rick, uh Commissioner.
Uh, are we in a position to make comments now or just ask questions?
Um, I think now just ask questions and then when uh she is done with her presentation, we can go ahead and comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Marlene.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so uh next slide please. And so um, as I just mentioned, the housing element, uh, we have a list of implementation programs, many of which are ongoing. However, uh, what what I've highlighted here is some three uh three major implementation efforts. That are probably the most significant in the in the next year or two. A- as we all know, Foster's Landing, the expiring Affordable um Housing Covenant has been. Um, the 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 biggest uh focus for the city um this year. What we have at Foster's Landing, as we just heard from from the tenants, is. Some expiring below-market rate units, about seventy four units um expiring by the end. Of twenty twenty three, um, not all of them end this year. The first phase, phase one, fifty units expire by the end of the year. Four units by the end of twenty twenty one, ten units by twenty twenty two, and the last ten by twenty twenty three. And so um just as a way of background, um, this development, when it was originally uh entitled in the nineteen eighties. It was um using the the when we still had the redevelopment agency, when we used tax increment credit. To subsidize the the rents uh at at this um at this development. And so the the covenant or the Affordable Housing Covenant were had an expiry date on it, which is which is actually. Typical of of housing developments that were um developed under the state. Uh, redevelopment agency back in the day. So this situation. Unfortunately, is is not entirely unique to Foster City. There are. Cities in the state that are starting to see a lot of their. Affordable housing units um expired because of these restrictions that were put in place uh back in the day. Uh, with that said, uh, as as a council is aware. Staff has been working with the Subcommittee and the City Council to evaluate various programs. We we did have some progress. Um, this year we amend the city's address uh pre- um tenant preference policy. We also did a third amendment to the Foster's Landing Affordable Housing Agreement, so we can start capturing the rent differential. And we also issued an R F P for Tenant Relocation Assistance Services Program. And so what we're doing uh right now is we have been. In conversations with S X to kind of move and kind of almost wrap up um the the step. In in the sense that we want to come back to the council. Um, soon with with some of these remaining strategies that we had originally identified, which included an early relocation assistance bonus program. A fourth amendment to the Affordable Housing Agreement and the post B M R agreement. And so um what will come back to the council is. Some of these options and what it is likely going to to cost the city. Um, like like I mentioned, we have affordable housing funds, uh not a lot of it, and so. We have limited resources um that we can use towards assisting these tenants. And so these policy decisions will be brought to the council uh soon, um, so we could assure the tenants at Foster's Landing. That um we will be, you know, making sure that they don't have to, you know, immediately face any inconvenience. Um, the the extension, for example, is something that would be brought to the council for consideration. So. Um, I I we will have a a meeting. Uh, as early as October to kind of wrap up these discussions and um. Hopefully, we'll 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 see that um. At least the the tenants don't have to face any inconvenience during this pandemic. And so um, any questions you, yes?
Yes, uh, there is a question. Uh, Councilmember Hindi has a question.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Marlene, my understanding is staff is about to meet with Essex one more time again tomorrow or somewhere sometime soon?
That is, that is correct.
So I want to be here on the record because I know I have been in in private, but I want to be here on the record today. To make sure that we need to get an answer from Essex about the post B M R agreement because. For me, this is the most critical agreement that we need to get Essex to commit to one way or another, so we know where Essex stands. And we have our residents are under threat, and as we heard today, they are under extreme. Level of stress and anxiety. And I, as you know, you were on the meeting, I have stressed the same sentiment to Essex directly. That we need to wrap these discussions as time is running out. And there is no reason to prolong this. We need a commitment. And we need to get an answer. So I, this is my request that tomorrow when you meet with Essex, the team meets with Essex. That this urgency is stressed one more time. And that council is expecting to get an answer without any further delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Fruman has a question.
Yes, thank you. Couple, two questions. Uh, Marlene, I know you haven't necessarily completed your discussion on Foster's Landing. But I I ask a question regarding the program there. Um, if you can explain, please, to the public, the rate, the the rent setting. Program that is used for Foster's Landing compared to standard B M R units. Everywhere else in the city and county. And um. If the city of Foster City were to implement. The B M R strategy that's throughout the rest of the community and elsewhere. If we had done that at Foster's Landing in nineteen in the nineteen eighties. How many of the people who are currently living there under this program would be able to live there today?
Sure, um, Councilmember Fruman, to to answer part one of your question. What makes Foster's Landing extremely um affordable uh compared to some of the other B M R units in the city or other cities? Is that the the rents are based on thirty percent of the annual household income. And so a single parent or a uh a retired senior who is on limited fixed. Income only paying thirty percent towards rent. It it's very unique. Um, and. If if this were in place back in the day when when the uh the agreement was executed. I don't know, I would say maybe probably fifty percent of the uh of the tenants, um, and that's just a very rough estimate. Would have been able to afford um paying the rent at at this location. So we have, as an example, rent as low as three hundred to four hundred dollars per month at Foster's Landing.
All right, thank you, Marlene. And one one other follow-up question. If um we you've talked about several programs that we've discussed at the council level to try to assist these residents. And uh, aside from COVID, which is very unique and and clearly an issue. Uh, related to this first phase of the group. If we're able to help the Foster's Landing residents financially get through this situation. How do we ensure that we have sufficient funds available to do exactly the same level of assistance? To other residents who live in B M R units currently when they expire?
So we we don't have any similar um affordable um covenant restrictions. Um, at least not in the next fifteen years, um, or ten to fifteen years. And most most of our affordable housing agreements are in perpetuity. And so um what what the council's decision, when we come back to them with some of these other um programs is. We have um X amount of dollars in our affordable housing fund. We're probably anticipating Y dollars to our linkage fee, and so. How much of it is what we want to spend towards Foster's Landing while. Keeping or preserving some of the remaining funds for futures of similar needs. And and that that that's a council uh policy decision which which will be which will be coming to you.
You you mentioned the linkage fee. Could you describe that again?
Sure, so um, the commercial linkage fee is a fee that developers, uh, commercial developers. Basically, anything that's non-residential have to pay anytime they they build non-residential development. For example. Someone who wants to build a thousand square feet of office space is assessed a thousand times twenty seven dollars per square feet. Um, so that's that's the amount of commercial linkage fee that they would pay. And that money is used towards affordable housing needs.
And and that's even for expansion, because clearly we don't have a whole lot of land that's available to be developed right now. But when somebody's expanding a property, that would apply?
Yes, yes, it it would apply. As an example, Family Dental is expanding um their their office, and so. They are required to pay the the affordable linkage fee as part of that expansion.
Excellent. Thank you, Marlene.
Sure.
Marlene. I have a question.
Commissioner Patton.
Uh, yes, I was just looking at these phases of uh of closure at Foster's Landing. Uh, could those be adjusted in any kind of way? Because you, you know, the first phase, you got fifty units in four, ten, ten. I I I don't know of, I guess that's the way it was set up in the beginning, but. Could that be adjusted to equal layer phase out? In the year?
Actually, uh, actually, Commissioner Patton, the original agreement had all seventy four units expiring by the end of twenty twenty. What happened, um, I believe it was twenty eighteen, is um. Uh, Essex, the property uh owner, uh defaulted or um did not meet their obligation in keeping some of these units rental, and. I'm not fully aware of the history. But that triggered an amendment to the original agreement and um these four phases. Um, oh, some of the units got extended by a couple more, two to three more years. Uh, so at this point, there is nothing that can be done to change this. Um, that was part of that, uh, I believe it was the second amendment to the original agreement.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see any other raised hands, so continue, Marlene. Thank you.
Sure, um, so again, we'll be coming back to the council uh shortly with with more um discussion related to Foster's Landing. Um, as I mentioned earlier, that the study session is really kind of to give a a a broad overview of everything that the city is grappling with. Um, not in term, not only in terms of legislation, but also what's happening at the local level. And so the the next two implementation efforts I would have our consultant planner, Leslie Carmichael. Um, briefly go over those, and these are again some of the initiatives that would be coming to the city council in the near future.
Hi, good evening. Um, so I'm going to talk about the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. And that was included in the twenty fifteen housing element. Um, the concept is it's an overlay zone that's added to the existing zoning. And would allow housing sites to be redeveloped at a higher density. So the proposal was to apply these to existing apartment developments. Many of which were developed um in the seventies and eighties at relatively lower densities. Many of which were developed in the seventies and eighties at relatively lower densities. And the the we call it the AHOZ was included because. Although we were able to count some of the housing that was approved in. Pilgrim Triton and in Foster Square, we were still short. Being able to show we had enough housing sites to meet the RENA. And so if we didn't find capacity for housing on existing housing sites. We were going to have to go convert other properties, like commercial properties, into residential. You know, allowed residential development. So the city chose to go this route with the AHOZ, apply it to some existing apartment developments. A lot of them are in the process of redeveloping or or refurbishing their properties anyway to be. Stay competitive. And at the time, we even had a proposal from Harbor Cove to go ahead and and add additional units to their property. Which they later withdrew. So the housing element was approved with the AHO zone in it as. Basically, what Marlene said, that we promised we were going to follow through and actually adopt it. And so that is something that we are proposing to. Get back before you this fall and early next year. We would have you adopt a resolution of intention to officially start that process. And would go through the normal zoning review process with the planning commission, they would make a recommendation. And then come back to the council for final final action. The housing element proposed four different properties, Beach Cove, Franciscan, Sand Cove, and Shadow Cove. For designation with this zone. In the meantime, we have a proposal from the owners of Lantern Cove. To add additional units at their property, so that is another potential site.
Leslie, I have a question for you. So these, what happens to us if we identify these? And then they don't follow through with any renovations whatsoever? I mean. It it's not up to us to to renovate these properties if they're privately owned.
Correct. We just have to show that there's the capacity for those units to be developed. In the next housing element, there are a lot more requirements for what we have to. Do to analyze the sites and their development capacities. But for this, the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, we just need to follow through, adopt the zone and and apply it. I want to mention one more thing here, the the housing element to show the capacity for the RENA. It's not just the total number, it is the RENA at those various income levels. So the other thing the AHOZ is intended to do is. Provide some additional incentive to get more proportion of the very low and low income units. So that our total number doesn't have to be so high if we can meet those lower income. You know, unit requirements.
So so what happens to the residents when, I mean, if these are going to be developed, they're going to be adding units? What happens to the residents who will be displaced while their renovations are going on?
The property owner would be required to present a relocation plan. They're not proposing to remove all the units on the site. They're proposed, well, in the case of Lantern Cove, for example. They're proposing to remove units on a portion of the site and build at higher density on just a portion of the site. So they have some capabilities to relocate people on the site. Or to other their other properties in the area or to other. Properties that they don't own. So they would they would present that redevelopment, I mean relocation plan as part of their proposal for review.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Hindi has a question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Leslie. So just so we understand. Not only do we have to identify, I think we also are required not to block or we cannot stop. Say the property owner comes in with their plan to go through with the project, correct? Otherwise, we'll be facing the penalties from the state. So so long as we identify it and no one takes action, that's fine, but if a property owner wants to go through the project. Then really the city, I mean, they can't say no, but eventually they'll be sued.
Correct. There's your the the. Prop- property owners are able to apply for housing projects and could apply using density bonus. For instance, to add units to these properties under the current law. But the fact that we have also put this in our housing element, and if we don't do it. They have kind of another leg to stand on when they come in with their housing proposal to to limit. The city's ability to say no to them.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is. Though, so we are called under Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, but not all those units, the increase in units will be affordable housing, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's still the twenty percent inclusion rate applied?
What what our thinking was, and again, it's all subject to council approval when it comes back, but. What I thinking was was not to require the twenty percent, but to require. A larger percentage of the very low and low, like I was saying. So the total might be less than twenty percent. But we get more of those lower income units that are really hard to come by.
And the reason for this strategy or this request would be to meet where we have deficiency currently in meeting RENA.
Correct.
And what do you think about if we were actually to even start to entertain and requiring. Higher than twenty percent inclusion rate? I mean, the the what what did you think about that? Did you evaluate that on a staff level?
We did, we did not. When we when we did the commercial linkage fee, there was a Nexus study that analyzed the economics. Of affordable housing and inclusionary requirement. And so anytime you're going to adopt a requirement like that, either for fee or the inclusionary percentage. You have to be able to show that what you're doing is reasonable and it's not going to be a big impediment. To the development of housing. You know, you adopted a a requirement that wasn't economically feasible. You would be challenged and and not be on a very good footing to defend that.
And do you think then, I mean, I'm looking to say, for example, an existing property today that has an apartment complex. That exists today compared to a new project that the developer will have to purchase land and do the construction. An existing property, they don't have to purchase, the land that has already been purchased, so in an essence, they have more room. If you will, for the project to pencil out compared to a completely new project. Would that be something to show that it is, we're not putting. Obstacles, if you will, towards that project being successful, even if we demand or require a higher inclusion rate?
Um, it it's something we can look at, but I don't have the information to make a judgment on that.
Understood. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fuhrman has a question?
Yes, thank you. I had a question regarding, on this slide, it mentions directing the planning commission to consider the rezoning of the properties. Leslie, if you can clarify for me, it was my understanding that the zoning on. Under which these communities were built allows them a higher density than they actually built. What I I'm confused as to why they would need to be rezoned.
To apply this overlay zone.
Oh, so the rezoning is just for the overlay zone, not changing their density zoning classification?
Correct.
Okay, the other question is is kind of almost a statement more than a question, but. You had mentioned that if we didn't identify these apartment communities as places to add affordable housing or add additional housing. We may have to go into commercial areas. And if we add housing to commercial i- in place of commercial areas, then we're removing jobs. Which moves jobs further away from the people that were moving into town, which creates a commute issue that we're trying to solve. And. If we if we have to use retail, which I know is is not a a popular choice in our community. If we lost retail, then at what point does commu- quality of life in the community play a role in the. Expansion of housing? We we could expand housing and have a community that is like Atherton or Hillsborough. That is all housing and no business and try to figure out how to operate in a in a in a situation like that. Where our residents have to go to some other community to get their groceries, they have to go to some other community to go to work. None of our our community members will be able to work in town because there won't be any place to work. I I guess I'm I'm concerned that none of this is being considered by the state, not you, Leslie. I know that you have a grander thought than that. But but it's it's a real concern. The the state does not seem to be giving much consideration to these other pieces that that play a role. In in this housing situation. I guess there really wasn't a question there, sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Owasty has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Leslie, my question is on the timeline that you have listed here. What is that based on? And what happens if we don't meet that timeline?
The the timeline is based on just kind of the the basic. Getting it through the various steps that it needs to go through. What happens if it delays? Probably nothing, although it's going to. Start overlapping with our need to get busy with the next housing element. So we'd like to get this over and done and on the books so we can move on. We're going to have our hands full with the next housing element issue.
And also to add to Leslie's response, there is a chance that the state might. You know, penalize us by by subjecting us to SB thirty-five when we are ready to submit our next. Housing Element Progress Report in April of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams has a question.
Hi there. So on this slide specifically, Beach Cove, Franciscan, Sand Cove, and Shadow Cove. Those were already included with the possibility of adding Lantern Cove. So does this mean that something like other other areas could be added if so requested from people? I'm thinking it's like a carrot regarding Essex and Foster's Landing.
Uh, yeah, other sites could be considered.
And and also, and also, Commissioner Adams. Most of the apartments in in Foster City that they're originally built back in the day were developed. At densities much lower than the general plan densities. So in your staff report, there is an example for Franciscan, right, that was developed at eighteen point nine one units per acre, resulting in a hundred and twenty-two. Units, but even without applying the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, they could, under the current. General plan density, build up to thirty-five units to acre, which almost doubles the number of units that's that's out there now. And a lot of apartments are very similar to this example.
Thank you, Marlene. Yeah, I'll have a follow-up question on that on in about two slides, so thank you.
Thank you. No more raised hands, so continue, Leslie.
All right. Hey, pardon me, I'm I'm starting to feel like maybe I'm a potted plant here. I've been raising my hand.
It's not showing up. I'm sorry. It's not showing up on my thing.
Okay, I I'm holding my, I'm holding my comments, but I do have a question, but I think it's germane. I don't know how many dollars we've spent on on addressing these state mandated housing requirements and how much we've spent. For consulting fees on that, and and my question is, have we billed the state for our costs under the provisions of unfunded state mandates?
Uh, no, there are some state fundings that's being used for the next housing cycle, though. And and this as well, the SB two money is being used for the AHOZ.
So Commissioner, so Commissioner Wykow, we applied for two planning grants, the SB two planning grant. And the LEAP grant, which is the local early action regional planning grant. And a combined grant money of three hundred and ten thousand dollars were award was awarded to Foster City. And these funds are used to cover staff time and consultant time for these housing implementation efforts, including. What we did on the ADUs, the AHOZ, the housing element, and and some of these efforts.
So so that would be funding for the unfunded liabilities that that are being mandated? Is that correct?
Um, these would have otherwise come from, yes.
Okay, thank you. I do have other comments when comment time comes up.
Thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Owasty has her hand up again.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a very quick question around the cost. I meant to ask this when Marlene, you were presenting Foster's Landing. Plan. Is there an idea on, even if it's a rough idea, on staff? Time spent on that and coming up with various solutions, et cetera? Just a rough idea?
Not off the top of my head comes to my mind, but I see.
Yeah, and I would request that, I mean, not right now, but if you can follow up on that, I I would like to understand. Staff time devoted to Foster's Landing overall. And potentially be able to translate translate that in in terms of, you know, dollar if possible.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? I don't see any other raised hands, so I guess we can continue.
Okay, next slide, please. To go kind of along with the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. We're proposing multifamily objective design standards. So design guidelines were proposed in the housing element to go with the AHOZ. But actually, we believe broadening that a bit to multifamily objective design standards is appropriate. Over the years, the state has. In the in the legislation made objective design standards a lot more important. And there are. Basically, the city cannot use subjective design review standards any longer to. Deny or reduce density. So we need to have objective standards if we're going to have any hope of guiding the design of these. Development. And a lot of other cities, you've probably seen in the news and what Marlene referred to in the SB thirty-five streamlining approval process. Because we were able to. Permit a bunch of units at the very beginning of this housing element cycle, we were not subjected to those SB thirty-five streamlining. Process, but the other cities have had to develop these objective design standards so that. That can guide the design of those projects, and and now we need to go ahead and do that as well. So we have here also in early twenty twenty-one, we're proposing to. Get those started. We have some community engagement proposed to go with that. And hopefully wrap that up by the middle of next year. Are there any questions on that?
Um, I see Councilmember Fuhrman's hand up.
Thank you. Marlene, when when we're talking about the objective standards, is this a place where we could legally put in a requirement related to. A percentage of land being reserved for open space, not talking about parking lots and walkways, but. The density that we're that a lot of places are being built at leaves really no room for anything other than living. And we have children that will be living in these places, we have people that need exercise and the ability to go outside and recreate. Is is there a way that that type of requirement could be put in as an objective standard?
I I believe so. I let Leslie answer that.
Yes, yes, that you can do that a number of different ways, but. Yes, yes, that, uh, you can do that a number of different ways, but, um, yes, that could be an objective standard.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Adams' hand is up.
Thank you, Mayor. Along, Councilmember Fruman's question. Um, when we sent up the ADU, we did not send the ADU ordinance up with objective design standards. Uh, I think because, or at least in my mind, was specifically to be able to have more control and decide what we want. It, when it comes to ADUs and, um, and in general, these objective design standards, how does the state determine if something is quote "infeasible" under the HAA? I understand, uh, things like park access or, or, uh, open space, but what, what sort of actual, um, building design standards are we able to do? Uh, lookbooks, uh, specific features of a building, uh, HVAC, air conditioning requirements, those sort of things? Access, uh, uh, another one might be a, uh, ADA access. What sort of things can we use, um, to shape our, this to the maximum objective way possible so that it isn't subjective?
Um, it ha- has to be, um, no personal or subjective judgment, as, as it's referenced here on the slide. Um, so, um, you know, you can have, uh, sort of numerical things for sure, the lot coverage, the open space area percentage, all that. And then there are ways to have some of the design standards be more objective as well. Um, uh, the, the window glazing area compared to the other surface area, the, um, you know, heights, the, um, daylight planes, there's, um, where the entries are, there's a number of, of, uh, options, um, that we'll be looking at.
Well, I guess I'm trying to understand where, where does it become unfeasible?
There's probably, uh, the answer is in court, you find that out. So.
Yeah, w- w- we, we don't have a set of, uh, uh, guidance document or anything along those lines, uh, from the HCD, uh, especially as it relates to ADUs. I know they were, uh, getting ready to put a guidance document out, um, related to some of the questions that have come up, uh, for ADUs, and we don't have that yet. Um, but again, as Leslie mentioned, as long as it, uh, it, it involves no personal or subjective judgment, it, it passes the litmus test, um, it, it cannot be gray, it has to be more black or white.
Okay, so things like, uh, uh, wall bearing and, and, and foundation support, those can all be objective things that we include to make sure that we, uh, take all that, all of that into condition. Even, could we even take into standards, uh, the original models of some of the neighborhoods in Foster City? Uh, in terms of what those were used for?
Sure, so the foundation and stuff like that would be covered under the building codes, which are generally, uh, very black and white. But, um, say for example, there's an HOA with very distinct architectural character and features, an objective design standard could say that the ADU must match, uh, the, the design and materials used in the main house. There is really no, uh, personal or subjective judgment. If, if the main house uses stucco, then the ADU will be using stucco. So yes, that, that qualifies as an objective design standard.
That's exactly what I was asking, thank you so much.
But, but as I understand it, Marlene, if it's under eight hundred square feet, we can't say that it has to match the house design.
Correct, and, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for, for pointing that out. So, state law as it relates to ADUs, if the ADU meets the minimum, uh, standards, uh, for the eight hundred square feet, they're not, uh, subjective, um, they, they can do whatever they want. But anytime they want more than, than the minimum standard, then the objective design standards, uh, would apply to those ADUs.
Thank you.
We cannot, we cannot preclude, uh, eight hundred square feet ADU on any grounds.
Uh, Councilmember Fruman has a question.
Yes, thank you. Um, as it relates to the, the standards, uh, typically, our planning commission has for many, many years, uh, made it very clear to folks that wanted to renovate homes, build homes, add additions, that those homes needed to be in similar form to other homes in their neighborhood. They needed to blend, basically, they didn't need to be exactly, but they needed to blend. That was one of the significant purposes, it seemed, of our planning commission. Um, do we lose that? Um, because we got homes in certain neighborhoods that are wood shingle siding, we have other neighborhoods that are stucco. Um, how do, how do we? Can we still do that, or do we really lose that opportunity with objective standards?
So, um, what, we are talking about the objective design standard as it pertains to second units or ADUs, um, for the time being, but single-family remodels, um, and other type of renovations would, would default to the city's architectural, uh, and solar guidelines, which by the way, at some point, we, we will be coming back, uh, to, to update, uh, at which point we could have further discussion on, on how we can, um, you know, um, update those guidelines. But those, uh, to my understanding, they're, they're not, uh, required, uh, to follow the objective design. So these are particularly to facilitate, uh, the production of affordable housing, to streamline the review process, um, a- and so that, that's where these kick in.
But wouldn't, wouldn't, uh, okay, so I, I got it wrong on the single-family home neighborhoods, but on this slide it says, why should we adopt the multifamily objective design standards? I, I understand what you're saying about the ADUs, and I agree a hundred percent that, um, with what's been, when discussed regarding matching, uh, building types and things like that. But we would have similar issues with these multifamily dwelling apartment complexes and things like that, um, in a neighborhood. Wouldn't, wouldn't we want them to be complement the neighborhood as opposed to stand out from the neighborhood?
And that's.
Yeah.
Sorry, and that's what we will try to write into these standards. Um, but to not have standards, you're gonna, that will, uh, make the city lose the ability to, uh, have some design control.
No, no, I, I understand that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Owasty has her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor, um, just a quick clarification, Marlene, um, on ADUs under eight hundred square feet, you mentioned we can't, um, have any restrictions. Uh, how about the HOA rules for those cases? Will the state requirement trump HOA rules?
I'm actually going to defer that to Kai, our Deputy City Attorney.
Sure, uh, thank you, Marlene, and, uh, good evening, Council. Um, there is, as part of the package that the state, uh, of laws that the state passed on ADUs, there is, um, one of those bills dealt with HOA restrictions and, uh, HOA covenants that restrict, uh, certain types of building. Um, and in some cases, uh, Commissioner, or, uh, Councilmember Owasty, you are correct that, um, some of those restrictions, uh, will no longer be enforceable. Uh, from the city's perspective, that those are, those are sort of private contracts between the, the HOA and the homeowners, so the city doesn't really play a role in that, but you are correct that the state has also targeted, um, HOA restrictions.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, I don't see any other hands, so I guess we can continue, Leslie.
Okay, I think the next slide is Marlene.
Thank you, Leslie. So again, um, we kind of briefly talked about Landton Cove. There's, there's a couple of, uh, housing development projects that are currently in the entitlement process. We have a preliminary review application for Landton Cove. The proposal includes a five hundred and eighty-eight unit residential development. This includes the hundred and sixty-eight existing and four hundred and twenty new dwelling units and some additional parking. And we also have the thirty-two, uh, townhome units proposed at sixteen oh one Beach Park Boulevard. We don't have a formal application for rezoning and general plan amendment yet. Uh, we were working through the environmental, uh, review process for that project, uh, right before COVID. And so, um, once the applicant submits for the rezoning, general plan amendment, these, um, projects would, would be coming back to the planning commission and eventually to the city council. Next slide, please. And so, um, as, as you, I, if you remember, last year, the city had embarked on some of its, um, community engagement efforts as it relates to housing, and we were taking the help of County Home For All, uh, Community Engagement Program. And essentially, we were trying to develop new effective methods of reaching out to and engaging with our community, uh, members. And so when we had a kickoff meeting, um, we identified some goals for this community engagement process, uh, primarily to build a more diverse and representative level of participation and civic decision-making, um, by reaching out to non-participating or underrepresented groups, just broaden and deepen the community's understanding of housing, um, and other factors in, impacting Foster City as well as stated regional requirements. And also to establish a foundation for productive conversations about, uh, how Foster City can best address the challenges of housing moving forward. And so we had, um, started the process, we had done some, um, uh, outreach efforts, we had, uh, identified some pop-up events, um, I believe we had, um, a couple of them, but unfortunately, right when we were in the middle of it, um, we had to, uh, pause our efforts. And so, um, um, Interim City Manager Hall and I have been in communications with, um, with County Home For All in trying to see how we can shift, um, the community engagement process to a more virtual, um, means, using virtual tools and methods. And, um, we, we internally bounced off some ideas on, on this process. We have also put a lot of resources on the city's housing page for community members to, to read up, educate themselves about the housing issues that the city is faced with. So we will come back, um, as, as we, um, as we figure out, uh, a, a program where we can shift towards virtual participation. And these again would, would all be again part of the various efforts that we are undertaking, whether it's the AHOZ, the multifamily objective design standard, um, the housing element process itself would involve stakeholders and community engagement. And so how all these efforts kind of overlap and how we can have that one, um, cohesive, um, uh, conversation about housing i- is something that's, that's very critical, uh, to us. And, and because I, I think as, um, elected and appointed officials, you, you wanna know what the community thinks about all these different, uh, initiatives that the city is gonna be embarking on. So we'll be coming back, um, with, with a strategy on how we wanna, um, push, uh, our community engagement efforts to more online, um, towards online, uh, resources. And, um, the next slide, I would have our, uh, Deputy City Attorney, uh, Kai, yes? Oh, sorry, sorry. Yes, sorry, I'm sorry.
He has his hand up, I think he had a question on the last slide.
Actually, a very, a, a quick comment, uh, Mayor and, uh, Marlene. Uh, obviously, when we started, or you started, staff started, uh, this, um, program, the idea was to have face-to-face community engagement, and we wanted to bring everybody in and to hear from them. For me, one of the biggest challenges has always been, is how do we schedule these meetings in a way, in a time and in a place, where we could engage more members of our community? And that has always historically been the challenge, is just because of the timing. Uh, most people work long hours and both, uh, household, uh, moms and dads working, so it was extremely difficult to get people who are working long hours, non-traditional nine to five hours. So my two cents here, I think this might be more conducive for us, having a virtual engagement, not just by means of surveys, but really actual meetings. And with Zoom and other virtual meetings, I think it will afford our residents and our community members the opportunity to participate at a higher level. And, uh, so it might be really not a bad thing. We, I know we took a break, but it's, as we reorganize, uh, I think, uh, we should be not hesitant to do that in a quick manner, because quite frankly, I think it's a really good time to, to do so and a good time to do it because of the level of participation that you might be getting and the diverse participation that you might be getting in this situation than your traditional time. Just two cents, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so I'll have Kai take over.
Thank you again, Marlene, and, uh, good evening again, Council and Commissioners. Um, real brief, we've just summarized two, two housing-related bills that passed, um, this past September one at the end of the legislative session. Uh, as you probably read in the staff report, um, this is not sort of the broad, um, housing policy overhaul that everyone sort of expected this year from the state. And we sort of attribute that to the, the pandemic and, um, focus being sort of taken away from, um, the housing crisis that the state is in. Um, but I don't think that the state is, uh, gonna stop here. And as you probably read in the staff report, there was another bill that seemed right on the doorstep of, of passage, and then the end of the legisla- legislative session happened, uh, before it could get to a final vote. Uh, and that would have done a much more, um, that would have taken a much more aggressive action towards, um, requiring that, uh, housing be permitted, uh, particularly in single-family zoned lots. Um, these particular, uh, these two bills that we've summarized here are really just about increasing, uh, the density bonus, under the density bonus law. And then when we do our next, uh, housing element update, um, we'll have to adhere to these new parameters about, um, allocating at least twenty-five percent of the RENA for moderate and above moderate units to site zones for, uh, at least four units. And that's really, um, if you look, maybe not in our city, but if you look across the state and regionally, those are the two areas that, um, there is a significant, uh, deficiency in, in, in housing stock. So, um, that's what that law is about, and I can take any questions about either of those things.
Um, I have a raised hand from Councilmember Fruman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Kai, a question on, uh, AB two, three, four, five. If I understand the wording there correctly, it, uh, decreases the threshold, the number of affordable units, percentage of affordable units that are required for developer to access these incentives, which lowers, in, in, in Foster City terms, basically, if we wanted to give incentives, we'd go down from twenty to fifteen or ten, and they could still get, uh, incentives. Is that what that means?
Yeah, so it's basically doing two things, i- in, Marlene probably knows a whole lot more about this than I do. But it's, the, the housing bonus law, or the density bonus law essentially sets thresholds and then sets, uh, benefits that, uh, increase, uh, in how lucrative they are, how great they are, how much bonus you get, uh, based on how, how many more affordable units you can create. So what this new law is doing is basically, it's lowering the thresholds, but it's also increasing, uh, the carrot, the bonus that you could get.
They could still, but I guess, I guess the concern I have, and, and I'm gonna refer back to Governor Newsom and his California for all, well, for all means people who have difficult means to afford housing. And if we're gonna allow developers, in this case, on the lower end of things, to continue building and still give them incentives, even though they're decreasing the number of affordable units, it doesn't seem like we're reaching the California for all objective. Um, that's the first part, the second part is on AB seven twenty-five. I guess I just don't understand it. Um, can you give us an example in Foster City, what, how this affects us and what we would need to do?
Um, are you, you're talking, excuse me, you're talking about AB two, seven two five now, or you're still talking about AB?
Now, now, with, with seven two five is, is the question really, the other, I guess, was more of a comment. Um, how, how do we do this? I mean, it says twenty-five percent of the moderate and above moderate sites is zoned for at least four units. Are, are you saying that we, we need to take single-family home parcels and make them four units? You got twenty-five percent of our RENA numbers have to, have to do that? I'm confused.
So, um, you're starting to go down the path. Um, luckily, uh, so this bill just passed earlier this month, um, about three weeks ago. And luckily, it doesn't go into effect until we have to do our next housing. And luckily, it doesn't go into effect until we have to do our next housing element after the year 2021. So, we have some time to sort of strategize and figure this out, but the short answer is yes, from my understanding, is that we are going to have to identify at least a decent amount of sites that can accommodate at least four units. And that probably means identifying new sites that currently aren't zoned for that level of density.
So, aren't, isn't there an average lot size in Foster City that could be used? Is it 5,000 square feet or something like that for a single-family?
Yeah, it's about 5,500 to 6,000 square feet of the average lot size.
And how would we fit four units on that size of a lot? Obviously, it's got to be at least two stories. And how do we keep setbacks for neighbors, front and back, on the sides, I guess, reasonable if we've got four units on 5,000 square feet?
So, Kai, correct me if I'm wrong, but my reading of this was, it says it's on-site zoned for at least four units, so that would apply to our multifamily zoning district, correct? And not our single-family zoning?
Yes, it's, it's any zone. That's right.
Okay, so we're not, we're not requiring, we're not permitting a single-family residence to be torn down with a, and replaced with a four-unit development, so long as it's for moderate or above moderate BMR housing? That's not what we're saying.
So, I think, I certainly understand the concern, and maybe, maybe, maybe I've invited this inquiry by including this in the staff report, so I apologize for that. But I think this is going to take, this is going to take some more analysis to figure out exactly how close we are to, to meeting this requirement as-is, and then coming up with, with a plan sometime within the next year to two years about what, if anything, needs to happen so that we, we can comply with this law.
I guess, as a real quick follow-up, now that I'm thinking about what you just said, the above moderate units, and I don't have the number in front of me, I can't get it quick enough, it's in the staff report or in one of the attachments, we have like 500 or more excess above moderate units, if I understand correctly. Can we use those to meet future requirements, or am I looking at the wrong numbers?
You're right, council member Freeman, as part of the last housing element, we did overproduce on our above moderate housing, but we, we don't get credit for any of that towards our next housing element cycle, if that's what you're referring to.
So, I guess, well, I guess then that adds further concern for me. Unless we're building 100% very low and low-income housing, BMR housing, the whole complex or the whole community is that way, if we're doing 20%, every time, in order to get two low or very low units, we have to build eight moderate or above moderate, which we're already way over, to get there. Is that, I mean, so in order to reach our, our very low and low standards, we're going to add thousands of moderate and above moderate units to get there?
Yeah.
What about market rate?
Yes.
As well.
And, and I, I think that has been the biggest criticism that, that the state has received, like, hey, you, you have all this housing built, but are they truly producing the, the affordable housing that, that we are in need of? And unfortunately, if you said my opinion, the answer is no.
No, I mean, unless, unless you have, and I don't know the proper name of the, the development, the mid-pen housing that we've got in Foster Square area, that building there is all very low and low, isn't it?
Leslie, is that correct? Is that mid-pen or is that?
Mid-pen, Alma Point, and if there's any, it's a very small amount. I can't remember the exact number.
But it's really, it's really difficult to get projects like that.
Oh, yeah, they have.
Where the entire building is like that.
Yeah, they have six or 10 different sources of funding to pull off a project like that.
Right.
If I could add one comment on the AB 725, I think that was targeted at cities like, for instance, Los Altos Hills, where there is no multifamily, they have one acre minimum lot sizes, and this was saying to them, listen, that's not fair, you're not doing your fair share, you got to have at least 25% of your above moderate on multifamily sites.
Yeah, and I guess this, this kind of leads right into the one-size-fits-all type of thing. You're writing a law that's really designed for Los Altos, Atherton, Hillsborough, and you're making it apply to, potentially, it says including Foster City, making it apply to us, just like the laws that they're writing to do all these things that we've been doing for 20, 30 years, and we get absolutely no credit for it. When other, other cities, I don't, I don't see, I, I understand Marlene gave some pretty good examples, I guess, of Cupertino or whatever that was forced to do some building that they didn't want. But you don't see a whole lot of that going on around the state, so there doesn't seem to be a huge carrot out there for following along and doing what, what you should be doing, what we have been doing over the years. It certainly would be nice if they looked at what we've done, when ABAG is looking at dividing up who needs to do what and saying, you know what, Foster City, you've done an excellent job over the last 35 years doing this, we're going to lower your number exponentially and hand that out to other communities in the area that have not been doing that. It would be nice to see that gesture on the part of the state or ABAG in recognition of the work the city's done.
And, and if I could clarify, the meeting on Friday wasn't the total ABAG, it was just the committee, because I did not know about a meeting on Friday, correct?
That is correct. It was just the Housing Methodology Committee.
Right, okay. I have a hand raised, Evan Adams, next. Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I think what council, council member Freeman might have been going to the, the lot splits was, was AB 11 or SB 1120 that did not make it this year. But my questions have a few other things. First of all, I know we, we blew through it real quick, but all the public comments, obviously, were regarding Lantern Cove and, and obviously Foster's landing and along with Beach Park. And one of my questions on this has to do with the density bonus. In the examples given regarding the 588 units at Lantern Cove, or I guess the additional 420 units at Lantern Cove, does that include all possible density bonuses that they could potentially use there? Or could they come with more density bonuses?
Exactly. They could start at the general plan of 35 units per acre and ask for more, but that's not what they're doing.
Okay, yeah, we have not seen it yet, so I wouldn't know. Next question regarding a beach park, the staff report calls it an existing church building. So, if it's an existing church building, would AB 1851 apply that from this year? Housing, housing having to do with housing built on parking lots of religious organizations?
Kai, you want to take that?
Sure, I don't believe so, because my understanding of the project, and Marlene, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that it would be a private development of an existing lot owned by a religious organization, but the housing itself would not be created by the religious organization.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That's my question.
Okay, thank you. I have Vice Mayor Ghani with a question.
Actually, can I make a few comments, or are we still in question?
Well, we're not on, we're still on questions. We haven't completed the, the presentation yet.
Sorry, been quiet for like two hours.
I know. I'm sorry.
The staff did a great job with the, with the reports. I don't have any questions, I'll wait. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we can continue, please.
Sophia, next slide. Okay, so with that, I'm going to wrap up my two-hour-long presentation. Thank you, thank you for being patient. Again, really, the idea was to provide a framework on, on all these various regional, state-level, how, local housing initiatives. And also, you know, we, we just talked about the housing legislation, the, the one comment that I heard at our recent director's meeting, what keeps all the directors up at night? They can't keep up with all the housing legislation and everything going on with the state. And so, again, the state's one-size-fits-all approach to housing densities and land use decision-making has, has received a lot of criticism. And there is absolutely little to no consideration given to capacity or availability of public transit, traffic, parking, water, sewer, school. And we have lost our redevelopment fund, so there is also that added complexity of how do we provide, how do developers provide affordable housing without the lack of, with the lack of funding? And we are also seeing that the, the legislation places very little burden on major employers that continue to add more jobs in areas that are already facing, facing a major job-housing imbalance. And so, to, to kind of wrap it all up, the, the issue of affordable housing and housing in general is, is a very complex issue, and it, it needs to have a multi-pronged approach to solve it. And what we are hoping is to have dialogue with the planning commission and the city council in the next, you know, in, in the immediate future, in the next two to three years, as we work on our housing element update, is how we can come up with a housing strategy that, that really is suited to Foster City and we can work with the constraints that we have. With that, thank you again for your patience and open for any further questions or, or follow-up questions. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Marlene, and thank you, Leslie. I think that was a, a great presentation and clarified up a lot of, a lot of questions that we had, so I really thank you for that. It really helps, I think, to get together with the planning commission and, and really hear this stuff in detail. So, I thank you. Because I don't want Commissioner Wykoff to feel like he's a potted plant, I'm going to go, I'm going to ask him for his comments first, if that's okay with everybody else. Go ahead.
Thank you. One of the thoughts I had when I, when I read the staff report, and I went through it two or three times, and by the way, I wanted to say that I thought the last two paragraphs of the staff report were just excellent, and, and in my mind, the major part of, of tonight's I've been trying to figure out, we, we spend a lot of time on trying to solve the affordable housing problem, and there's no doubt we should be concerned about the lack of affordable housing throughout the state. But Foster City has an excellent history, I think, of encouraging the development of affordable housing. My thoughts go along the line of thinking about some of the major, where some of the major lack of affordable housing, primarily in the service industry, job sector, that's in general, I think, where a lot, a lot of people can't afford the housing that we have, and which would include, among others, the teachers, medical workers, hotel and restaurant workers, as well as the multitude of minimum wage earners. These employees are necessary for functions and businesses which provide the services our citizens need and want. This is out of the box, I'm sure, but maybe it's time to target those functions and businesses and mandate them to provide an affordable wage in urban areas, or better yet, require them to provide affordable housing. I, I know that, that's probably very strange and other, my wife said that she almost thought I was turning progressive when I let her read that. Which those of you that know me know I'm not progressive. Anyways, I read a very interesting article this, this weekend in the Mercury News, and it was by Dan Walters, he's a columnist for Cal Matters, Cal Matters. And I think it's an article that would be worthy for all the council members to read. I'd like to quote some excerpts from it to our group. Again, another reason for the failure to meet housing demands are many, but one long-ignored factor, the insanely high cost of building so-called affordable housing. And he goes out and goes on and points out the cost of, of low-cost housing from, per unit, at around 350,000 to, in one case, it went up to 1.1 million in the Sacramento area before a developer finally backed out of the deal. Anyways, he goes on and says, "An alarming example of how political, economic, and bureaucratic forces have converged to drive up the cost of such housing at a time when growing numbers of Californian needs it." The LA Times went on to point out, "Analysis of state data found that apartments cost an average of about $500,000, which in some cases is more on a square footage basis than it costs to build a 2,000-square-foot house." Mr. Walters goes on to point out other outrageous examples and sums up his article in the following way, "These outrageous numbers driven by bureaucratic tangles, misplaced environmental restrictions, and high mandated labor costs, and unless states officials do something about them, we will never solve our housing shortage." I guess in short, and this is my point, government can only solve the problem when it recognizes it is a major part of the problem. To this point, the most cogent part of the staff report, as I indicated before, I think were the last two, two paragraphs. It's important, absolutely, to be concerned about the availability of affordable housing, and I'm not negating that need to do that, but I'd also postulate, a higher priority for a planned community such as Foster City should be the needs and concerns of its citizens and business community, that being public safety, police and fire, public works, sewer, water, infrastructure, and equipment maintenance, repair, and replacement, proper planning, parks and recreation, as well as the normal administrative functions. And it just seems to me that we spend more time talking about housing than we do about the other original functions of, of why cities became cities. Again, I, I, I don't, I, I don't want to eliminate the thought that there's a concern of affordable housing, but Foster City is a planned community, and we've done a great job. And we spend more time on this housing stuff and with the mandate, what, what's needed, obviously, is what is suggested in, in the last two paragraphs. And I think at some point in time, the council may want, want to decide to, to develop some type of a strategy to address those one-size-fits-all with the state leg, we keep saying the state clauses, not the state, state didn't do anything. That's an entity. It's the state legislators that have done this to us and the state bureaucrats. And so, those are my comments, whether they're enjoyed or not, but I feel better. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Next, I see Vice Mayor Ghani with his hand up.
Thank you so much. I promise you, these comments are my own, even though they come after Commissioner Wykoff's eloquently spoken comments. You know, I did, I really appreciated our conversation earlier today, Commissioner Wykoff. Let me start off with, and again, these are my comments, but it seems to be right where Commissioner Wykoff left off. Let me, let me first thank staff. Phenomenal job on the reports, all the supporting documentation. This has got to be the first, not the last, conversation, right? This is just the beginning, we need to reintroduce this to the community and have a deeper discussion because the dynamics here have changed significantly when it comes to our control. So, we need to pass the communication back to the state, not just for Foster City, but for the region. We are in the economic epicenter of the economic epicenter of the world, and one size doesn't fit all. And we simply can't focus on one variable and build our way out of this issue. Let me give you an example. And Marlene, please correct me if I'm wrong here. With our current inclusionary policy, we would have to build 7,900 to 10,700 units to meet the projected RENA, RENA numbers, and we're built out. We have around 14,000 housing units right now. We would have to grow by 60 to 80%. We would have to grow by 60 to 80% to meet the projected RENA numbers. Am I off on that, Marlene? All right. Thank you. That doesn't make sense to me. We need an intelligently integrated public transportation system, we need investments in education, private investment in expansion of Silicon Valley eastward and south, and a reintroduction of state development funds. We can't just look at housing alone. I also recommend our inclusionary policy be increased as high as possible to truly help those in need. And in addition to increasing the percentage of low and very low-income residents, increase the percentage of development for low and very low-income residents, because that's very near and dear to who we are as Foster City. My second-to-last comment is for Jordan Grimes, and I believe he's still on, and I appreciate him staying on. You know, I need to explain why I was shaking my head while you were speaking. You know, initially it was because I felt like you disrespected the previous speaker in your tone and selection of words you used to convey your position. But it's really, it's always really good to know where you are. When selling homes in Foster City, T.Jack Foster Senior refused to include the clause about not selling homes to people of color, a clause that was common in many CCNRs. And if I'm not mistaken, Foster City was the first city in the state to remove that clause. Today, we are one of 29 cities who have met our very low, low, and above-moderate targets. There are 510 jurisdictions that have not. Stating that we are terrible actors is not only misguided, it's just flat-out dead wrong. And I totally support your drive and your initiative. Your challenge really isn't your speech, it's your execution. I highly recommend you use your time wisely, it's for a good cause, and attend council meetings for approximately 95% of the state that isn't meeting its RENA numbers. So a little more Miyagido, little less Cobra Kai. And finally, as an example of how civil and respectful we are in Foster City, my last comment is for Commissioner Adams, someone who I don't see eye to eye with when it comes to development, especially in Foster City. I want to congratulate you on getting married.
Thank you.
Thank you, those are my comments.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make some comments? Councilmember Owastie, I saw your hand.
Thank you, ma'am. So I would also echo, thanks to the staff, Marlene, Leslie, Dante. This was a very comprehensive report. As I look at what all we have discussed, and not just this meeting, but also the previous meeting that we had when we talked about ADUs and frustration from majority of us on the requirements that are slowly but surely taking away local control, and we are not able to do anything about it. So in today's discussion, we kind of saw both sides. We saw the problem from pro-housing lens, and we saw the problem from anti-housing lens. We know from the pro-housing standpoint that the job versus housing shortage has led to homelessness problem, and there are many points, many pros to a pro-housing approach around eliminating racial segregation, growing economy, stopping climate change, the issues with more heterogeneous societies, if you will, with availability of housing for workforce, for teachers, and for folks doing other services. And from the anti-housing lens, we heard loud and clear the risk of loss of local control on land use, the inappropriateness of one-size-fits-all, lack of housing sites in already-built-out Foster City, impact to schools, impact to infrastructure, water, streets, public transit, traffic, parking limitations, and above all, the financing and not really moving the target on affordable housing. So we looked at the problem from both ends. So what do we do now as a council? Based on Friday's meeting that Marlene shared, it seems like for 2021 to 2031, RENA requirements for Foster City will be above 2,000 units. So what do we do as a council? We continue to keep expressing our frustrations? What would that get us? Are we, as a council, planning to meet those requirements? If yes, what is our strategy? We should be talking about that. If no, and is that even an option? Is that even an option? And if no, what is our strategy? I think it's very important to move beyond frustration and toward action-oriented approach on what we can do about this problem. We should start really listening to understand each other. The region and the state will continue to apply pressure for cities to meet RENA goals and to make the proper planning decisions to accommodate new housing at all income levels. However, it is very well-known that this continues to be a policy issue. Majority of the housing bills this year have failed, and Foster City is not the only city, and Foster City residents are not the only residents who are voicing their concerns on the impact on quality of life and infrastructure. But what are we really doing about it? So I spent some time thinking, and there's no easy answer, and I talked with some of our regional electors at the regional level as well. Here is an idea, you know, coming from my action-oriented approach, here's an idea that I would share today to do something about it. It may or may not lead to success, but we have to throw darts at the problem, and one of that might stick. So coming from that action-oriented approach, I think we need to collaborate as a council to come up with a housing exemption bill. And what I mean by that is, and again, I'm not saying that it will be successful or not, or it is correct politically from all different sides, if you will, but the way we collaborate on it from both pro-housing and anti-housing partners, it may lead to something. Like I said, none of the pro-housing, none of the housing bills have succeeded so far this year. So we got to be able to figure out how we work together to solve this problem. So it has been said multiple times, Foster City is one of the 29 cities that has met their prorated very low and low and above-moderate income RENA numbers. So I'm now talking about why Foster City would need an exemption, and what would that look like, and what would that mean? What I'm proposing, that we collaborate on a bill, and then we get support on that from both sides. We meet with regional electors, we talk with regional, other city council members and other regional electors. Why Foster City needs an exemption, we all know that. We are an island, and we need to come up with data and facts on if that is even an argument. Traffic issues, entry and exit, ability to build parking, transit. So we know, we don't do that well when it comes to transit, the access, the frequency, and above all, voice of the community. What is our community asking for? There is a reason why local government exists. There is a reason why there's no one else other than five of us to take the best care of our residents, and we need to be able to respect that voice. How many cities similar to Foster City are out there that we can collaborate with? And like I said, on both sides. So articulating this problem, collaborating, supporting with data and facts on these reasons that I just went over, maybe looking at how many jobs Foster City created, how much land we have, get community input, and perhaps it will lead to something. So this is an idea for everyone to consider, open to thoughts and suggestions, and other thoughts as well. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Hand up from Commissioner Jack Tiani.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, staff, for the report. And well said, Richard, I think you said what I wanted to say. I think to add to what you said, basically Foster City is a planned community, and I think that in itself is a big reason for us as a community to go back to the state and defend our community, you know, when it comes to housing and what they are trying to, you know, do with these bills. Besides that, I think Foster City has, I think is one of the only cities in California with that many HOAs within its community. I think that is a second reason to go, you know, to the state as well. And if we have the help with our HOA community to get them involved in this fight, you know, that will also go a long way. Besides that, I think if this, you know, before we come to all these bills that have been lined up for Foster City to consider, you know, be it the affordable housing overlay zone and the multifamily, just one project, which is Lantern Cove, if one project can add up to 420 new dwelling units, we need to do a study as a city to understand if we pass all these and if we go along with what the state is saying, how, what are we looking at in terms of overall, you know, number of units that will get eventually added to Foster City or could eventually get added, and how it'll impact our infrastructure, and are we even prepared as a city, you know, to handle that?
Thank you. So I'd like to make a couple of comments too, because I agree with everyone who's spoken so far. I think it's ridiculous to put that much of a burden on Foster City when we've been a good actor, and that's what really bothers me. Taking away local control is not the answer. We're the ones who know our city best, we and the residents. The state people, the legislators in the state don't know our city, we know our city. And I also think we need to mobilize the residents. You know, the five of us can't do it alone. We have to have the voice of the residents behind us. So if we can mobilize the residents to take action, I think that will help as well. Collaborating with other cities, because I know in some of the committees that I'm on, the other cities feel about the same way we do. They're being pushed as much as we are, and they're having to develop more than we are. So they feel the same way we do. So we discuss this a lot in our ledge committee, and it's, we do have a lobbyist there. The state is just not listening. The state legislators are not listening. The last two paragraphs, Marlene, of your report, I agree, they're my feeling exactly. It was amazing to read it because I said, that's exactly how I feel. They're taking away our control of our city, and they don't know how to do it. They are clamoring around, putting out these bills, and not looking at the consequences of these bills. You know, what are the consequences of building all this housing? Okay, are they giving us any money to improve our roads? Are they giving us anything for the water rates? Are they giving us anything at all? Any incentive at all for this? But another way to look at it is, if you put this pressure on the developers, the developers are not going to want to build because they can't afford, it doesn't pencil out for them. They can't afford to put that many affordable units. So it doesn't pencil out for them. So these bills are not going to work if you can't get developers to develop. And I don't think that the state is, I don't think the legislators are looking closely enough at the consequences of some of these bills. I think they're right now, they're just writing bills because they think building more housing is the way to solve the housing problem. It's not the way to solve the housing problem. It's a multi-dimensional issue. It's multifaceted. It's not just housing. It's not just if you build housing, there will come. It's not just that. And I like the idea of teaming with businesses, maybe to provide housing or affordable wages. You know, maybe if they provide the wages that will allow people to live in these areas, that might be one way to approach it. We have to, I think right now, we have to look out of the box. We have to come up with some ideas that are out-of-the-box thinking. And if we do come up with a bill, if we came up with some legislators who are willing to help us with this situation and write some kind of an exemption or something that makes more sense for cities like Foster City, that might be a way to go about it. But we have to mobilize the residents as well. In my opinion, that is very important because I think they will listen to their constituents, maybe even more than they listen to us. So those are my comments.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Commissioner Paul?
Yes, I'd just like to thank staff for a great report, and it was on the money for sure. And I do agree with the last two paragraphs of the report that Commissioner Wykoff mentioned. It was plain, and like you say, we are a planned community, and one size don't fit all. Our community is put together, and it's plain, how did we become a planned community? There must have been some guidelines for that, but they're not looking at it as a planned community. You know, you can only fill the bucket so much. If you've got a gallon bucket, you can put a gallon of material in it, and that's it, and everything runs over. And I think we're about to run over because we are built out just about. And with all the questions and answers to the ADUs, there's still some that has to be figured out because it's not plain to me of the setbacks and attached and detached and to maintain the character of our neighborhoods and things like that. But other than that, it was a, it's a great session that we had this evening, and I've learned a lot, and I would like to thank you, mayor, and the staff for the report. Those are my comments so far.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Fruman, yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to also echo the comments regarding the staff report. It's a very meaty topic, there's a lot to understand in there. Actually, I only got through half the report before I got a migraine, because how much detail and how much information there is. But Marlene, you've had a smile on your face every time someone has said something about the last two paragraphs, and you should, you should have a smile on your face. I'm proud of the information you put in there, it's right, spot on. The second thing I wanted to cover was, I want to share Vice Mayor Gahani's comments regarding looking at the bigger picture. You would think that in state government, you would look at the bigger picture, and they simply aren't. There's way more to this topic, and I'll hit on a couple of those in a second. I too want to take offense to Mr. Grimes' comments. Foster City has been a leader in the state for affordable housing, reaching our goals and doing what we can to do our best to meet the needs of our residents. Foster City, again, as people have said, is a built-out community that's based on a plan. It was a plan by T.Jack Foster to put together a wide variety of housing types and housing opportunities for people, and we have just that in our community. If you look around, people are talking about the HOAs, we have apartments, we have low-income or below-market rate, we have market rate, we have homes, we have on-the-water, off-the-water, townhouses, condos. You can't get any more diverse than we have in the way of housing in Foster City. And I think it's really important to note that everybody who is on this call right now, who lives in Foster City, moved here for a reason, and it wasn't because of the affordability of housing. It was because of the character of the community in which they wanted to raise their families, send their children to schools here, be in a community where you're not surrounded by cement and stucco and whatnot, you're surrounded by trees and parks and opportunities. And the more the state pushes for housing, the more housing we will have and the less opportunity we will have for our residents. Um count uh council member, city manager, Commissioner Wykoff, mentioned the affordable wages. Is very true. You know, I mean, it's it's a snowball effect a little bit. You raise the wages, it raises the median income, it raises the BMR values, but. The the fact of the matter is that in if we want people to be able to afford what can be reasonably and affordably built around here. Uh we need higher wages for people to be able to do that. There there it the the cost to build is significant, and and you can't avoid that. Um the other comment that was already made and and Marlene made it in in her second uh the last paragraphs, which is. Right on point is, the reason, one of the the parameters is being used to decide how much housing we need, is job growth. Yet nothing is being done to deal with the companies that are providing that job growth. Um why not? The linkage fee, I wasn't part of the decision to do that, and I'm not going to say it's a bad decision. Um I don't think it goes far enough. A linkage fee makes it, gives you money to do something. Well, if you don't have the land to do something, that money really doesn't have any value. If if a company wants to expand their footprint and bring in more employees, they should be required to build housing. On their property. They own it, they build on it. Build housing for some of those employees of theirs. Number one, it deals with affordability, because they're providing it below market rate to their employees. Number two, it deals with commute, because those are people that aren't on the roadways. They're walking from their house to their place of work onsite. And it fits right in with these big companies. These big companies, Sun, Google, Oracle, all of those companies have all of these amenities. On their sites to to keep their employees there, because the longer they keep them there, the more they work. If you house them on your property, you're keeping them close. It supports exactly the environment they want to have for their employees. Uh next, I think I heard uh Councilmember Wassey mention about legislation, not the state's legislation. Our legislation. Maybe we need to put together a bill that we can bring forward, a proposition for the. The residents of of California to say, no more. We're done being told what to do. We're going to do what's right for our communities. Because as as the mayor mentioned, we have lobbyists in the state at the Capitol. We have lots of cities that share our concerns. And our representatives simply don't care. They're not listening. And that leads me to my final point. And probably the most important point. It is very easy for our residents to look at the legislative digest. At the state and know exactly who authored these bills that we're talking about. They can look at the vote on those bills and know exactly who voted for them. Those people may, you may see their names again just next month. If you really want to send a message about what you want in your state, send your message on your ballot next month. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make some comments? Uh yes, Councilmember Hindi.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh thanks to staff, clearly a great report. Um my my biggest challenge with the state approach is really. More like that demanding all these things from local governments, yet not providing any assistance.
Mm-hmm.
Uh the redevelopment agency was taken, yet the same requirements are required. Uh things are even tightening a little bit more, and yet the state simply, it seems like the role is pass the legislation and pass. The cost and the box into local cities. And that's, I think, is an unreasonable expectation. So the state needs to step up and be, if the state wants to see more housing. Need to step up and provide the financial assistance and the mechanism for the cities to do so. That's number one. Number two, uh clearly, there is a housing crisis in California, and I think that is what's driving all of these legislation. But the deeper I dive into this and sitting on the council for those past few years. It really became apparent to me that um the biggest problem in the housing crisis, at least for me personally. Is the affordable affordability of the housing more than the housing itself. For for example, here in our region or in our city, if someone has a million and a half dollars or two million dollars. Uh it's not that difficult to buy a house in a week or two. It really isn't. Uh if someone is making ten, twelve thousand dollars of income a month. It's not really that hard for them to rent a one-bedroom or two-bedroom apartment or a townhome. It's really the challenges on our uh middle-income folks. And when I talk about that, and also the service workers, right? Uh you're talking about your teachers. The lack of affordability. You're talking about people who are instrumental. Of making this community what it is today. You're talking about uh teachers, nurses. Uh people who really, we talk about our quality of life, these are instrumental in our quality of life. You are entrust, we are entrusting our children, our future, with the teachers. And a teacher who is getting paid whatever amount of salary he or she is getting, and cannot afford to live among us. That's a recipe for a disaster. And one needs not to look further than San Francisco and other neighboring cities to see. How the migration of teachers and the lack of teachers in their schools. So we need to figure out, quite frankly, how do we address the affordability of the housing? So we could continue to have this diverse, because Mr. Foster really designed this community as diverse as it is today. He did on purpose, planned it in a way that we have our single-family homes. We have our townhomes, we have our town uh condominiums, we have our apartments. And he did that because he wanted to have this diverse community, socio-economic diverse community. For all of us to come in and build this community that we enjoy today. So um. Raising the wages, Commissioner Wykoff, that's a great idea. However, uh I I think if you want to expect the businesses. To pay these livable wages, which we talking probably about twenty-five bucks to thirty bucks an hour. Uh we need to make sure our residents are ready to pay ten, fifteen dollars a cup of coffee. Because without that, it's not going to happen. Uh there's the small business is not going to absorb that. There is no room to absorb it. So as we know, it's all snowball effect. So uh but the reality of the matter is. Uh we are in such a great country, the richest country in the world, and the sad truth is. That you have folks who are working sixty hours a week. And dual-income household, and still they cannot afford to rent a one-bedroom in this county or in this city. And that is, one need to reflect on this and see if something wrong with it. We're not talking about people who are not willing to work. We're not talking about people who are lazy. We're not talking about people who are unemployed. We're talking about members in our society who are doing everything that is required of them. And as a government, we are failing them if we are not providing them with the proper skill set to earn higher wages. So these minimum wage jobs really, uh in my view, should be more for. Uh transitional, young adults, high schoolers, college, to fill those. And all the other adults should be able, especially those who are willing and are working. The fifty and sixty young one, should be able to earn higher wages. Uh the that's the government, the government's role to make sure those skills and those uh trainings are available for all those people. Uh but this is a very complicated issue. It really is. Uh but. Affordability is a huge issue, and we need to think about this as we dive deeper into these kind of discussions. Is what kind of community do we want to see in Foster City? Yes, we want to preserve our quality of life. Yes, we want to have. Uh certain neighborhood kind of remain the way they are, because that's why we moved here. But at the same time, if there are requirements, and we know where the state is heading, there's no question about it, the state is heading. We could attempt to fight, and I'm not dismissing the ability to fight or the ability to collaborate with others, but I could tell you. From the meetings I have attended in the regional, whether whether regional or state, probably eighty percent of the cities believe. They have a special situation that they need to be exempted. And at that, everybody's opinion, then we as eighty percent that we think we should be exempted in our community. We should figure out how do we solve this issue, because the pro- the fact of the matter is, we do have a problem. As a state, as far as housing. So I don't know, h- h- how do you fix it? I really don't, but what I know is the state will be, need to be more involved than just passing legislation. More involved in leading and more involved in providing resources to cities to execute what needs to be done. But just to say um we're not going to do anything, I think it will backfire on us. So we need to have a conversation as to identify where and how much we could put more housing to accommodate. I think our middle class, to accommodate our teachers, to accommodate our nurses, to accommodate the folks who work at Starbucks and serve us the coffee or at Safeway. Uh those folks, if they want to live here, they deserve to be able to live here. So that diversity in housing to where we have what we have now about five hundred units. We should strive of increasing that stock of affordable housing, so we could protect the character. Not just the character of the community, it's not just the uh aesthetic of it. In my view, it's really the diversity of the community. The socio-economic diversity. When my kids go to school, I don't want them all to be in the same level that we are. I want them to be exposed to everyone. The better, and the one like us, and the one who happened to be a little bit financially not like us. Uh that will make him stronger members of these, of the of our society in the future. And that's what society is. Society is not monotone. It is really diverse, and the sooner we do this, the sooner we try to figure this out, the better we are. So my in conclusion, basically what I'm saying is, our approach should be two-pronged approaches, should not be just let's go ahead and fight the state. We should also continue to really work on how we could identify where and how much we could add housing. And specifically affordable housing. But I I understand the what the Vice Mayor had said. What what would it take, in the current structure, what would it take to build market-rate housing to get to where our goal we want to get? Maybe not the Rena numbers, but still, we need to have more. Uh again, this is a very long conversation. I'm glad that everybody is here and everybody is chiming in. And hopefully, we could uh have more and continue this path and figure out what's the best way forward to Foster City. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Adams has his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um you know, I think when we look at all of these issues, I think we always. Well, first I want to say, Marlene and Leslie and the whole staff, I know these meetings are very stressful. And preparing for them are, it's just so much work. I know I spent all weekend getting ready. I mean, on Friday, I listened to the A-Bag meeting, and then I was reading about the MTC meeting on Wednesday and all the things that are coming up at that. I mean, it is just, it is so much work, and I appreciate all your work. Um and you know, I I think it really made it clear today that there are a lot of things coming down the pipe at Foster City. What we need to plan for, what we need to get ready for. And ultimately, like as Planning Commissioner, the Planning Commission's job is to do what the city council tells us to do. Period, hard stop, end of story. You are the policymakers, you put your names out there, you ran for office, you know? You tell us to do something, and we do it. Very adamant about that. As a as a someone who worked in the state capital for a time. The people under you, their opinions do not matter. What matters is what you all tell us to do. And all we can do is give you the best advice we can. And when it comes to advice, I always ask, you know, what is the goal? What is the goal of this business objective? What is the goal of this policy? What are we trying to get to? Is Foster City's goal to meet Rena? Um you know, pay attention to the HCD July update. It the update, the Excel sheet says that Foster City is not making progress anymore on our affordable housing requirements. That's an important thing to understand and and be ready for. Um I absolutely would have to converge with um Com- Commissioner. Uh Jack Tiani's perspective. Um we need to do a study. We need to include um in that study. Uh what opportunities we have, and also what sort of oper- impact fees would be used? What would what would sort of impact fees would come forward on potential developments, help paid for roads and sewers and levees? We all know that when you do an environmental impact report, the environmental impact report includes things like schools. School, school size, school um uh ability, the the schools are included in that process, but it's all the other things. Uh we have a levy, we have sewers, all those things are so important. It what is the goal um that we want to accomplish? And how do we get there? Is it paid for? Through those sort of things? The goal could also be, maybe uh we don't apply, in which case we have to get ready for streamlining. Um as I said, when I applied to be on the Planning Commission, the housing, the HAA, SB thirty-five, SB three-thirty. Those have significant legal power, and it isn't just Cupertino that had project requirements streamlined. San Mateo had it. They went all the way through the court system for it. Los Altos did it. Los Altos, or maybe it was Los Altos Hills. They tried to appeal, and the judge insisted on a bond being placed. These are the sort of risks that maybe Foster City financially doesn't want to engage in. Um you know, that these can be severe and extreme financial risks. And so with that in mind. Um you know, I want to encourage the council that the Planning Commission, as the Planning Commission, we need lots of guidance from you. Uh you know, I remember on the hotel, kind of Councilmember Ghani's focus on noise, you know, something I I took very seriously. Um I have heard Councilmember or Mayor Mahon Gore on issues having to do with. Uh the the seismic stability of our bulkheads up against the water. Took that very seriously. We need more impact, more input like that. Um it's these objective design standards, those are our best opportunity to avoid streamlining. Uh we had a unique opportunity the last round, but now we have to be ready for that. We have to be ready to try to avoid. Um or try to mitigate the effects of any streamlining onto our community. Um Councilmember Ghani, absolutely, you know, thank you so much for those kind words. And as I've told you uh in the past, I think you and I agree on far more than we disagree. Um regarding, well, a- and you know, you never know, we might be able to find middle ground. Um but you know, as someone who would love to own a single-family home in Foster City someday, I'd love to see that home go up in value. And I will uh be there with you. So and and on this literal boat together. Um so uh in that, you know, we have to have a a productive, lots of back and forth, lots of input. I'm always available. Um you know, uh with the example of how do we deal with housing in commercial zones, you know? Everyone should pay attention to SB twelve ninety-nine from Senator Portantino on the last uh in the last session. That would have involved housing in commercial zones. It will probably come back. He's a very powerful figure and and has had significant impact on housing legislation. It could certainly be part of a bargain struck. Um further, as we're talking about things like lobbyists and things like that, you know, I attended the. Uh State Planning Commissioner Academy right before COVID started. And I spent three days sitting with the nicest council member from Pleasanton I've ever met. And she and I did not get along at all on policy items, but you know what? She and I talk almost every other week to some degree. She's a fantastic individual, and I've learned so much from her. And you know. We have to remember that that sort of event, that, you know, I I haven't been able to give it to anyone. But you know, that sort of event was put on by the League of California Cities, and I picked up all my fellow planning commissioners, these little. These little uh lapel pins for that. And you know, those are lobbyists up there, and I have to say, at that event. The lobbyists were super clear. They were crystal clear, and they were fighting for the same sort of local control things that that. People tonight have expressed a desire for. They've been trying, um but obviously on a state level. Uh not, California is not an island. Um we, I guess, are. Um finally, you know, uh Foster City, yes, is a a planned community. Um yes, you know, we we do need to plan for for the A-Bag Methodology Committee, that that information that came out on Friday. Uh I think we have to realize, you know, I think the recommendation coming from them was kind of a uh key word, kind of a phrase. I think it's going to be about twenty twenty by twenty twenty-one, uh or twenty thirty, twenty thirty by twenty thirty-one, I think was their number. And we'll see what A-Bag actually decides. But you know, we're we're a planned community. Um and I would just like to add a phrase to that. We are a planned community that is fifty years old. and I would just like to add a phrase to that. We are a planned community that is fifty years old. Okay, so we will be adding more people to our community. We will have the concern of uh, affordable housing in this town. Um, we have to remember that zero percent of eighty percent is still zero. And so we have to make it feasible for people to do things and and a higher uh, affordable housing requirement could backfire substantially on our community. And I would, I would, I would wave a yellow flag at that. Um, you know, finally, just in general, uh, Foster City, I, I hope Foster City becomes a, I, I just totally agree with Councilmember Hindi's statements. Foster City, it's best not from a perspective of what is here, what buildings are here, what roads are here, you know, the, the fish streets. If Foster City is a city of people, it's a city of diversity and it's that diversity that we should absolutely celebrate. And I hope Foster City in the future is a town where a teacher can live here, a teacher that works here, can live here and can afford to live here without someone else's help. Um, you know, I, I, I just, I so agree with that perspective, that diversity, uh, embracing that diversity, it, it's not just we're, we're not here to just build a Foster City for the rich. You know, we, we really are here, hopefully, that in the future, it's a diverse Foster City for everyone. And I thank everyone for all their thoughts tonight. I learned a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just a, a final word. I I personally don't think we have a choice but to uh, go along with, with um, the, the AHOS. Um, I mean, e- even if we decided to uh, fight it in some way, I think we have to go ahead with that procedure uh, to comply because the, the risk on the other end of not complying is going to be vast. So, I, I don't see that we have much choice. Um, just by kind of final words, but um, I know that interim City Manager Hall wanted to make some final comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a, a couple of comments. First of all, um, thank you all for having this discussion. It's incredibly helpful uh, for staff to kind of understand the different perspectives of council members and also Planning Commission. Um, it also gives kind of the community and and each of you um, a time to kind of hear each other out um, a- as we struggle um, to figure out what's right for our community. Um, this is, a- and I said this at the beginning, this is not the end of this discussion. This was just to kind of set the baseline for understanding some of the issues and challenges that are facing us right now. Um, and try to describe some of, some of the interconnectedness of, of the issues. There are gonna be opportunities when we come to you and to the community with these individual uh, items we're going to implement, um, the AHOZ. That will be another opportunity to kind of talk through, um, educate people and talk about what we're gonna do. Um, we're working, as you know, through solutions with Foster's landing. That's another opportunity to talk about housing, design standards. Um, as we look at our housing elements and and what it will include in the future. It's another opportunity for that. Um, and we also plan to come with you, to you with legislative updates of housing uh, bills or housing legislation that has the potential to impact Foster City. So, um, we are gonna be engaging the community. Um, I know that that's a big thing, but we're gonna start from education. Um, and we would encourage, you know, I know the, the uh, city council is doing this already in, in galvanizing people who are interested in this issue. Please come, please, please learn with us, please provide comments. We'd also invite their planning commissioners to do the same thing. Um, encourage the public. We really need to hear and we need to, need to understand what the needs are. Um, so that we can develop what strategy we will be using moving forward. So I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor. Um, City Council, Planning Commission, um, this has been very helpful for staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I am going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. It was, I think, a very productive meeting. I really appreciate your time. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.